The work session we've done for February twenty first. And introduction to our new employee.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Chris Muller, the nine one one supervisor. Happy and elated to be in front of you today to introduce our newest employee and we are fully staffed in the nine one one center. And I will allow Jay Leah to introduce herself.
Hello, my name is Jay Leah Mix. I'm originally from Bemidji. I just got out of the military after five years serving as a security forces member in the air force. I've been out for about two months now and I'm super excited to be back in the county, working for them. And just excited to be here and be new.
Welcome and thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Anne Lynn Seth, Health and Human Services Director, and I am happy to be here to introduce Curtis Anderson as our new Economic Assistance Division Director. Kurt has been with the county for the last four years. He served a year as an eligibility specialist and he's been in a supervisory position for the last three years. And I'll let him introduce himself and say a little bit more about his history.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. She said Kurt Anderson, I spent twenty eight years in the in the army before getting a chance to come back here to Beltrami because I originally graduated from Black Duck High School back in nineteen eighty seven. And then Bemidji State in nineteen ninety one. So families here, it's it's been wonderful to be able to work at the county and have another opportunity to serve. And very humbled and appreciative of this opportunity to continue that service.
Welcome. Thanks for your service. And how do you pronounce it? Mahalo?
What's it?
Mahalo?
Mahalo. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Time to be identifying any future work meeting topics. And topics that Dan would like to bring up for this night.
Mr. Chair, I guess I don't have any future work meeting topics, but maybe a reminder of what we have on the docket would be would be helpful.
You know, we're kind of springing this on you.
Yeah.
I think I can do it. You give me just a moment.
I know one was the new director of the VA home. Okay, I'd ask him to.
That's correct. There isn't a lot coming up. We have tentatively scheduled Kevin Gish to come make a presentation at the March seventh meeting for the Veterans Home Update. Just as Commissioner Anderson had mentioned. And then other than, well, there is going to be an LED lighting conversion upgrade conversation coming up. Cannabis edibles was on the list as well. That's coming up in addition. And that's all I have listed at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I think one of those that we could either go to the facility or have them again come and talk to us about some of the programming that they have is the Northwest Juvenile Training Center.
We haven't had them for a while.
Right.
Certainly asked.
That might be something that they would be able to. I know there's other counties that are coming in and seeing the facility walk through with the changes that they've gotten. And they've also gone out to counties. All right, let's move on to ending of emergency snap or E snap. Kurt, are you going to be taking that?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon again, Commissioners. I am Kurt Anderson and as of today, the Economic Assistance Division Director. And I will be hopefully within the next five to seven minutes, providing you an update here on a an emergency supplemental nutrition assistance allotment that many of our county residents who have been on our public assistance programs have been receiving, but that is getting ready to come to an end. Next slide. Oh, there we go. Did I hit it wrong? Thank you. So first, a little bit of background on the program. In case, just to get everybody on the same sheet of music, E snap is an extra allotment that has been provided to the recipients of our SNAP and our food benefit program under the Minnesota Family Investment Program. This was actually put into place as a response to the first coronavirus response act of twenty twenty. So it has been going on for approximately three years. Recipients continue to get their normal supplemental nutrition assistance program allotment at the beginning part of the month. And then this program, this emergency SNAP allotment was paid in arrears. So the following month toward the end of the month, they would get a supplemental allotment which would boost their food allotment up to the maximum amount for that household or up to ninety five dollars if they were already at the max amount. Let me try the question again. Whoops, did I? There we go. Now we got it. So why is E snap ending? This special allotment is ending basically due to a provision within the Federal Consolidated Appropriations Act of twenty twenty three. And this is something that neither Minnesota nor the county have any control over that decision. So for most recipients, February is going to be the last authorized month for E snap. And our clients are going to see that allotment arrive in March. So that means in April, when April hits, they are only going to get their regular SNAP allotment at the beginning of the month. There will be no additional emergency allotment at that point. And then most importantly, who does it affect here at Beltrami County? We have approximately two thousand cases as of January of this year that receive some sort of either SNAP or food benefits. That equates to thirty nine hundred approximate county clients, both adults and children. And out of that two thousand cases, only two hundred and sixty of them are with our cash program, our Minnesota Family Investment Program with that. So what has happened now is last week, the Minnesota Department of Human Services nailed out a flyer which you had in your Rita head packets, that first flyer there. All residents received that. Also on the sixteenth of last week, DHS sent out a mass text to all of the clients, letting them know that this emergency allotment was getting ready to end. And it also provided links to go to for frequently answered questions that they may have in regards to the program. Also last week, with the help of Diane, we were able to get onto our county website. The second part of the allotment, which is again is or the second part of your packet, which is questions about the allotment to provide more information to our county residents. And it's right on the homepage that they can go to and click on the notices part of our webpage. Finally, we've had our case aides who have talked to clients here the past month as well as our eligibility specialists reminding clients that this allotment is getting ready to end. We have been reminding clients all throughout this period of time that it was only a temporary allotment. But again, until we got the final notice, now we're letting them know that it is getting ready to end. The last thing that I will point out is within our lobby on the second floor as well as our self-service center, we also have posters up there letting clients know that it's ending. And if they have questions, then please let us know. Besides letting them know that it's ending, however, we are letting them know about local community resources that will help them stretch that benefit dollar as they go forward. As you can see here, we do have things like Ruby's Pantry within the community, which is on the third Wednesdays. We also have the Beltrami County Food Shell. And then for those clients who have small children, ages five or under, we are letting them know about our Beltrami County Women's Infants and Children's Program, which is downstairs on the first floor of our building. The last thing I'll say is if any of you all have any questions, please know that both myself and my team are available to answer any inquiries that you might need or you know, any assistance that you request of us. Pending your questions, that's the information.
Okay, is there any, are there any questions of of?
Mr. Chair, first Kurt, welcome aboard and thanks for for this information. You know, a lot of the folks that I that I know and associate with utilize SNAP and and FIP. So I'm happy to hear that you have been informing a lot of these folks on on the ending of this program. I also liked that the the slide, the last slide there where it showed how many folks that are part of the program. Yeah, how many cases and people are part of the program? It kind of helps us, I take me, to get a good understanding of how many folks this might affect. And the next slide was, you know, what what additional resources are there for for some of these folks? Because as as you may know, the the cost of food, you know, isn't isn't decreasing much. So you know, these this ninety five dollars or ninety five extra SNAP benefits that the family's receiving have been helpful. But I think, you know, in most cases, all good things come to an end and this is probably evidence of that as well. So you know, I commend the work that you and your team are doing and reminding folks that, you know, this is coming. And I'm hopeful that you will continue to to help the clients that, you know, maybe you you're struggling because it takes time to adjust and and to manage and balance out your your monthly budget. So thanks for the work that you guys are doing there.
Anyone else? Thanks, Kurt.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Tom, was there a, I have this one kind of question mark, number five on the?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I was just going to make a note to the county board that Commissioner Gould, who's unable to be with us this evening, had made a request of me to ask the board whether or not they'd consider postponing item number five, the Paul Bunyan Drug Task Force update until he could return. I just wanted to convey that message to you and you're of course free to do with that as you will.
Done. You see things, you want to go along with that?
Yeah.
Request, okay.
Is is Joe here? Again, yeah.
Yeah, there he is.
So I I would just assume he's came or came to the deal tonight and and Joe Gould could certainly watch it on YouTube. So I think just go ahead with it, but.
Okay. Tim, do you have any thoughts on that?
Kind of the? Fine, either way, you know.
Yeah, I I understand, you know, the Joe you said is is here and I'm no, I'm fine, you know, whether he wants to hold it or come, you know, present them. Yeah, I just know I would have won, you know.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned for for, you know, his time.
Okay, yeah, and I and I think we we've we've got a vehicle where he can listen to it now. And if he has some other questions, maybe you can contact Joe himself and rather get get more information if you would like. Okay, we're a little bit early, but if you're ready, Joe, we're ready.
I'm definitely ready. And I can do it today or next, the next meeting's fine either way. If we're a little early, that's fine because there's a lot to cover that I'd like to go over with you guys. So.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. I guess good afternoon. I was asked actually by Ms. Commissioner Gould to give a brief on this. I knew Joe from when he was at VSU. And little about me, I just got promoted to captain of the sheriff's office prior to that for the last four years. And actually even right now, I'm kind of transitioning into that in the current commander, the Paul Bunyan Drug Task Force, a spot I've held for the last four years. And then I was an agent on there for some time after that. So I guess subject matter expert for the county, that would be me. So I was asked to come here and and talk about drug trends in our county, kind of what we're seeing, in particular, the opioid epidemic that has is crushing our area so horribly. I was going to have my replacement come in, David Hart, sergeant with the sheriff's office, but he's out today. So we'll jump right into it. Okay, figuring this out. To talk about fentanyl and heroin. When I was an agent in twenty fifteen, heroin had just kind of come into the area. We hadn't seen it. It's almost humorous in the fact that even ten years ago, we measured the amount of opioids that we'd seized down to the hundredth of a gram. And I'll get into some statistics towards the end of the presentation, but down to the hundredth of a gram is what we were measuring it by. Now we measure it by the pounds. On the slides, you'll see many different forms of heroin and fentanyl. And what we're getting at here is none of it looks the same. I couldn't tell you what heroin looks like. I couldn't tell you what fentanyl looks like. The upper left hand corner, that was a five pound seizure that we had done several years ago. And all three of those look completely different. It comes in a powdery form that can be white, that can be brown, that can be any color. We fall into the the colorful, the rainbow fentanyl, as has been in the news. And normally what happens with that is they'll say the color and then they add death to it. And the reality, so this would be pink death. And the reality is is it's a, it's advertisement for a certain dealer. They have the pink fentanyl, whether it's stronger or whether it's people like it more. We don't really know what it looks like because it comes in every form. Right now, if it's a powdered substance, we treat it as fentanyl. We have had a lot of cocaine lately that we've seized, but we are cautious with any powder and we just assume that it's fentanyl. These pills are fentanyl. In twenty nineteen, they kind of showed up with a vengeance. We had a young lady die of an overdose and she had like nine of these pills in her pocket. We asked the BCA if they would do a rush test on them and find out what they were. And they didn't. They came back and they said they're fentanyl, but they look like a thirty milligram oxycodone. And I was worried about it. Nobody had really seen these throughout the whole state. They were popping up here and there. And I put out a press release and said, if you see these blue pills, don't use them. Don't think that you're using an oxycodone. This is a fentanyl pill. We just had somebody die. True story, the next morning after my press release, I get called to a house in Nyamore and there's a young man who I've dealt with, you know, for ten years prior to that. And I said, Brandon, what's going on, man? What happened? It was an overdose. I said, what what happened? He goes, I seen your press release, Joe. I had to try them. And I'm like, Brandon, this isn't, this isn't some TikTok challenge. This is, I said they are killing people. And he said, but that's what we want. We want to get as close to death as we can. The stronger it is, the more euphoric the effect. To go back to, or excuse me, to the pink fentanyl, I got burned on a on a similar press release, pink fentanyl. I understand that police can't ask somebody not to use or tell somebody not to use, but we can try to give them like, stay away from this. Use use safely, use with a friend, have Narcan available. But all it turned into was free advertising for whoever had the pink fentanyl. So that kind of lays the groundwork to what our users are. They want the strongest. They want to get as close to death as possible because that's the strongest effect. This is commonly how heroin or fentanyl is packaged, folded up pieces of paper. So for instance, in that is probably a tenth of a gram. So to 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 tell you guys, if you were to go to Perkins and you get a pink packet of sugar substitute, you pour that on the table, that's a gram. So they take a credit card and they cut that in half, cut that in half, cut that in half, until ultimately they get ten piles. And that's basically a a user amount of fentanyl. If folded up in little pieces of paper. So if you ever find a little folded up envelope on the floor, it's probably doesn't have a folded up little letter in it. It's probably fentanyl. The way they ingest this, a lot of it, I mean, they'll inject it interveningously. They'll use the pill form. They'll mix it with other drugs sometimes, or they smoke it. A lot of the times it's smoked off tinfoil. Just to kind of explain that, when we, I think when a lot of people think about smoking, they think about, you know, corn cob pipe or smoking a vegetable matter that they actually light on fire and they inhale to smoke. With controlled substances outside of marijuana, they smoke it where they're inhaling the fumes. So they'll put a piece of fentanyl or heroin or methamphetamine on a piece of tinfoil and they heat it up underneath with a torch or a lighter and they inhale as it vaporizes. If you were to think of a piece of bacon in a fry pan that you slide around, it hits the new piece of fry pan or the fresh fry pan, it sizzles a little bit more, it sends off more. So they'll sizzle it around on that piece of tinfoil, leaving that track on the on the top of the tinfoil and they chase it with a dollar bill or a straw, inhaling those fumes. Unfortunately, we see, you know, these pieces of tinfoil all over. So signs of opioid use, the pinpoint pupils, everything slows down. Shallow breathing, shallow respirations, clammy skin, everything's shutting down in that body. The clock is really i- is slowing down. One of the things I like to tell people is we have our agent on the task force for the sheriff's office, his name's Brandon Newhouse. And prior to this, he did a probably a year doing the DWI enforcement. And one of the tests we do for controlled substances is called a modified Romberg exam. What it is, is most field sobriety testing is where you are doing two actions at once to see if you can I can't think of the name of it here. I'm drawing a blank. What's that? Divided attention. Thank you, Sheriff. Where, you know, can you stand on one leg and count? Can you walk and turn counting numbers? But what we, the modified Romberg test is is we ask them to estimate the passage of time. So we ask them to stand with their arms by their side, tip their head up. When we tell them to start, estimate the passage of thirty seconds. We have our stopwatch. We tell them to start, we click it and they estimate the passage of time. When they're done, they put their head down and we click stop and we can see what their biological or their, you know, their internal clock is doing. For instance, methamphetamine, the fastest that Deputy Newhouse had had was seven seconds. So tip their head up, they estimate thirty seconds and seven seconds. The second part of that question is we say, how did you get there? How did you estimate that in your head? And most people say, well, I counted thirty in my head, one one thousand, two one thousand. And we get like, I think it's twenty six to thirty four seconds is acceptable because some people say one thousand, a little slow or a little faster. So he's had seven seconds for methamphetamine and he's had a minute and forty seconds for opioids. That's how slow that clock is ticking inside their body. Street names for fentanyl. We could have lists of it, but a lot of the times it's called slow because it slows your body or boy, but it has to do with an I for some reason that I don't know. Fentanyl fatty, the pill form, they have different names for those, M box thirty, perk thirty, blue pills, Mexican Percocet. And like I talked about in twenty nineteen, they just kind of showed up and within probably two months of that, they were everywhere. Everywhere had them all throughout the state. It was like we got them and it was like, what are these? You know, are they being brought here by biker gangs? Are they being brought here, you know, through the cartels? But they were everywhere. Everyone had them within a month. So some tidbits and trends about fentanyl. Potency is high. It's very high. People have to cut this and I'm going to show you a little a little bit about that next. There's no normal looking fentanyl. We don't have heroin anymore. It's all fentanyl. We have drug dealers who we'll talk to, drug users. We said, do you use heroin at all? They say, no, I use fentanyl. Or yes, I use heroin, but I have to drive to Minneapolis to get it because everybody up here has fentanyl because it's so much cheaper. Because if you were to think about heroin comes from a poppy, which has, you know, from the time from the poppy plant into a user's arm could be six months. But fentanyl being made at a super lab in Mexico can get into the arm a lot quicker. We do see it mixed with other drugs. We see it carried within the body, which makes it difficult for law enforcement to interdict because people hide it inside of different orifices on their body. They sell it in fractions of a gram, like I'd said, the the pink sugar packet, you know, a tenth of that, all the way up to ounces and pounds. Those blue pills I showed you, forty five percent of those, the DEA says, has a fat, a fatal amount of fentanyl in it. So almost half of them. We've had several people die in our area off of a half of a pill. Futures dire, the recipe is similar to methamphetamine. And what I mean by that was I had an opportunity to go to a two week DEA drug school last year and we had a a scientist from the DEA talk about a super lab that he had seen in Mexico that they estimated had made seventeen hundred tons of methamphetamine. Okay, that's a lot of methamphetamine. And he said, the recipe for methamphetamine is cartel chemists, cartel labs, precursors from China. And that's what's going on with fentanyl right now. It's cartel chemists, cartel labs, the precursors are coming from China. I cannot imagine a world that anybody could make seventeen hundred tons of fentanyl. I mean, it it would be devastating. So as law enforcement, we've been working, you know, to use the name of a of a group of people that work downtown that we work quite well with, face it together. We have to face it together as a community. We can't arrest ourselves out of this issue. I'm going to put a couple pieces in your guys' mind. I won't bore you too much with the statutes, but one of the issues we have with the law right now is that the statute has a carve out for heroin and it says it's super important that that we hold people that have heroin very accountable. So if you have twenty five, first degree is the the highest level of crime for the state of Minnesota. So if I possess twenty five grams, so a little less than one ounce of heroin, I am, and I get caught, I will likely go to prison. That's a prison sentence. It's a presumptive commitment to prison. For heroin, you need five, or excuse me, from fentanyl, you need five hundred grams. So you need over a pound. So if it's me and my buddy and I've got heroin and he has fentanyl and I have an ounce, I'm going to prison. He has a pound. He ain't going to prison. Because of the, the statute requirements. And it's been on the books for the last three years to try to get the statute amended with no lock. Um, same with the sales. If we buy ten grams of heroin from somebody, that's a first degree sale. We have to buy fifty grams of fentanyl from somebody, because the statute just haven't kept up with, uh. Uh, you know, the trends. So throw, why do people do this? Why do people, why are people bringing this to our community? Throw out a little fentanyl economics. So you can buy a gram of fentanyl in Minneapolis for eighty-five bucks. This is not like. A business model. I don't encourage anybody to try to like go into a venture here, but you could buy a gram of fentanyl for eighty-five dollars in Minneapolis. Up here, you can sell it for a hundred and eighty-five dollars. You can over double your money by driving it from Minneapolis up here. Or you can dub it out, they call it. That's cutting it into those ten user amounts, if you will. We also bring it up and it's strong. So you take one part of fentanyl and you put three parts of inositol or three parts of. Powdered sugar or sleeping pills or whatever. And now you just turn your eighty-five dollar gram into four hundred and eighty-five dollar grams. So you could sell it for three forty, or you can cut it up into dubs and you could turn your eighty-five bucks into sixteen hundred bucks. And you've only had one gram. So the amount of money that people can make off this is, is ridiculous. For such a small investment. Counterfeit pills. You, you know, i- if you can see on the left-hand side, the bottom pills are the fake ones. Those are fentanyl. The top pills are the ones that would actually come from Big Pharma, if you will. The Xanax pills all the way on the right, same thing. Those have fentanyl in them as well. These are available, uh, people that are savvy with the internet. Can order these on what they call the dark web. We, we've, uh, we've interdicted several packages of these pills coming to our area. So to talk about what Beltrami County and what our area does, so. Um, in the last year. We seized fifty-six pounds of methamphetamine, street value one point nine million dollars. We did about seven pounds of heroin and fentanyl. With a street value of just under six hundred thousand dollars. So if you were to think about seven pounds, that's probably. Forty thousand dosage units that we've seized coming up here, you know, to cut it into one tenth of a gram. You know, so the, this is the drug task force stats, little with, including marijuana, which we don't really target because. Not going to say it, it's not a care of ours, but we have. This is what we're worrying about. We're worrying about, you know, fentanyl, you know, just about three million dollars worth of drug seized last year. Escalation and arrests. When I took over in twenty nineteen, we had twenty-three first degree arrests. That's that highest level in the state. Last year we did sixty-nine. We had four people that were federally indicted. These are cases that we worked in Bemidji as well as with Red Lake. We had sixteen people federally indicted last year. I mean, if you were to look at that, that's, you know, eighty-five really substantial. Till arrests, you know, compared to twenty-seven only four years ago. To look at seizures and it, you know, statistics are interesting to me, but I had talked about. You know, we talked about it to a hundredth of a gram, only ten years ago. Nine, nine point eight five grams of heroin slash fentanyl seized in twenty twelve. Thirty-two hundred grams seized last year. So twenty-eight or thirty-two thousand percent increase. Methamphetamine, same thing. We measured that hundred ninety-seven point five five grams. Just over twelve and a half thousand percent increase. There's a lot of drugs in our area. That's what I'm getting at. Anytime somebody gives me a soapbox to stand on, I'm a definite Second Amendment supporter. But one of the things I talk about is there's a question of why is police militarized? And I'm going to tell you this, these guns and drugs go hand in hand for us. Um, these are pictures from Bemidji, Beltrami County. Lower right-hand corner, that's two agents with a hundred and three guns seized on one search warrant. Lower left-hand corner, if anybody can point out something unique about this gun, a lot of people say, well, it's an AR fifteen. Why is there a grenade launcher mounted to it? Because we seized that from a storage unit in Beltrami County. Same search warrant was the top right gun. It's an Uzi clone with a silencer on it. Um, that's what law enforcement is up against right now. People with grenade launchers. I'm going to talk really quick about overdoses. Um, not going to bore you with the technical definition of an overdose, but it's when you take in so many. The opioids come in and they sit on every receptor in your body till your body shuts down. Once your body's receptors are full. Your body can't operate anymore and you overdose. So talking about twenty nineteen, we had five overdoses, five fatal overdoses, five people died. Um, and that was probably pretty consistent for the years leading up to it. People would use too many drugs and they would die. In twenty twenty, in July, I started ringing a bell. Like, we're having an issue. It's worse than it's ever been. We need help. We need, uh, we, we need to start facing this together because law enforcement can't fix this. Uh, we had fifteen fatal that year. Last year we did twenty, or twenty twenty-one, we had twenty-four fatal. And in twenty twenty-two, we had twenty-eight fatal ODs. Now, working with Red Lake, they had fourteen additional. That's forty-two fatal overdoses in North Central Minnesota. Forty-two. And this, I can tell you right now, that number's probably forty-six since twenty. You know, including last year and the beginning of this year, because I think we've had six already. Um, they arrange it from ages. One to sixty-seven. That's what we're dealing with.
Mr. Chair. So George, uh, the overdoses, that doesn't include the ones that go unreported, correct? So that could potentially be.
That's correct. I, I think for the deaths, we catch it pretty good because we pull some stats from, you know, um. The BCA and the HIDA program, they run something called OD map where you. Emergency rooms and first responders report deaths. So, um, I think we catch most of the deaths, but I wouldn't doubt it if there's a couple that slip by. But as far as like, in twenty twenty-one, I had a hundred and fifty-eight overdoses. We still count those. I think that number is absolutely kind of useless for us though, because there's so many. I mean, I would guess we get called that. If, if it was ten percent, I think it would be pretty. That'd be a pretty liberal number. Um, everybody has Narcan right now. Um, talking to people and that's what we do as a task force. We talk to people. We live on information and. The amount of people that say, you know, yeah, well, he died, you know, he overdosed six times last week. Just to put the mindset, like I know. Some eyebrows raised when I talked about the young man who wanted to. Use the pills that I put the press release out that it killed somebody the day prior. They'll have Narcan parties, if you will, where one person, you're the designated person to stay sober enough. That if somebody tips over, give them some Narcan to bring them back. Uh, or, you know, we'll get people that are upset with us as law enforcement, where we literally go in and, and they're dead. And I'm, when I say they're dead, they're dead. It's CPR in progress. Um, they haven't breathed on their own in, in quite some time and they get Narcan and they wake up and they're upset. Because they just lost their high, but they were dead. Overdose signs, presence of, or presence of drugs and paraphernalia or known history. Uh, being on the nod where they are literally falling asleep as we talk. Normally getting arrested, getting put in the back of a squad car is a very traumatic experience for people. Uh, a lot of the times when we arrest somebody, as soon as they sit down in the back of a squad car, they're asleep, which is not normal. Uh, respiratory depression, unresponsiveness. Uh, they'll get a death rattle. Their last few breaths are normally almost like an agonal breathing where they can't get enough inside of their lungs. What to do? Call nine-one-one as soon as possible. Try to rouse them. I'm going to throw myself under the bus with this one. I should really change this slide. First time I did this presentation, somebody in the. Group raises their hand and they say, how come the second point says try to arouse them? And I'm like, what? Yeah, I spelt rouse wrong the first time I did this. And I said, no, don't do that. Make sure they're breathing, administer Narcan. There's Narcan everywhere. Law enforcement's, uh, the Bemidji Police Department, they're using Narcan almost daily. Uh, stay with the victim. There is a Good Samaritan law and I want you guys to understand that. So the Good Samaritan law. Protects people who call nine-one-one in an emergency from prosecution. And from prosecution against the person that's experiencing the overdose. We want people to call nine-one-one. And as a supervisor with the sheriff's office and the police department feels the same way, we're not arresting people. When we go to a call of somebody overdosing and there's a warrant or there's something like this. If they arrest somebody on a warrant on an overdose call, I'm going to call them personally, because I think that's. We, that's not the way we roll. We want people to call, because if. Of those forty-two people that died last year, inevitably, some of them died because they waited to ask for help. Uh, and, and we need to, you know, abolish that wait. Narcan, so if you look at this little. This is the best picture I've been able to find. The upside-down pine trees are the receptors in your brains. The purple balls come in and they just kind of hang out and naloxone or Narcan comes in and just kicks those. Those, those purple balls off and, and they say that's my receptor. The problem that we run into is that we'll Narcan somebody, so it kicks off all the opioids off the receptors. And by the time, you know, they feel pretty good. And they don't want to go to the ER. They don't want to do anything like, like that. And they leave the hospital against medical advice, whatever the situation may be. But the opioids are hanging out longer than the Narcan lasts. So we've had people overdose twice without having to reuse. Because once the naloxone wears off, the opioids come right back to the receptors and sit down and they overdose again. That's all I have. I'm definitely open for questions, uh, on anything drug related. It's what I've been doing the last four years is talking about it. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. It is overloaded. When you, when you look at just the raw data, the numbers of, you know, twenty-eight thousand. I don't know of anybody else who can say much of a, that we've experienced a twenty-eight thousand percent increase in anything. That's pretty huge.
Yeah, and the fact that. Is, keeps going up. How do you, how do you control that? How, you said, you know, we can't arrest them out of it.
You know, we've been working with, uh. You know, I, I think Beltrami has a, and Bemidji has a, we're really lucky that we have some good peer support groups. I know everybody's kind of trying to look outside the box as much as they can. I think personally, we need to get to. Younger people and educate them on this. Uh, I've been, I've done presentations to high schools, high school staff, church groups, whoever I can to talk to them about it, because. You know, the, one pill kills. There's a DEA kind of ad campaign that's going on right now. That's called one pill kills. We've had people who, it's probably their first time using it and they don't survive, so. We're all trying to look outside the box, I'll tell you that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Joe, can you talk to us about the. Push to legalize marijuana and what effect that might have overall on some of these other.
You know, marijuana is not what we've seen. And I can give you a twenty-minute talk on that too. It's not what we've seen years ago. Um, the marijuana that we're dealing with, I have a similar slide that shows this is what. You know, signs of marijuana use are. And, you know, one of the bullet points on it is hallucinations. Now, I think everybody looks at it and they say hallucinations from marijuana. No, not really. That doesn't sound right. But the THC levels from, you know, marijuana from nineteen sixty to two thousand and five averaged like three percent. So I don't do a lot of math, but just to lay this out there. So if you smoked a joint in nineteen ninety-nine. Roughly a third of a gram of marijuana at three percent, you'd be ingesting ten milligrams of THC. Okay, well, right now marijuana levels are about twenty percent. Well, nobody smokes joints anymore either. Um, they smoke a blunt, which is a hollowed-out cigar packed with marijuana, which is about a gram. So just comparing those two, that blunt has. Uh, two hundred grams of THC, so it's twenty, the equivalent of twenty joints. Or for instance, the new legalized gummies, edibles. Each one of them has five milligrams. So you eat two of those gummies. It's comparable to smoking a joint in nineteen ninety-nine. So the levels of THC we're seeing are astronomical and we're seeing people hallucinate. I can tell you story after story of people we've dealt with. Who are in situations that we think are PCP, you know, excited delirium. It's a negative thirty degrees out there standing outside naked and sweating, you know, screaming like a bobcat. We finally get them to the hospital and they test them and all they have is THC in their system. So we're seeing, we're experiencing different love, different problems with some of that. And I personally, personal. It, it's hard to talk about how we need to tighten this up. We need to get a statute change. To hold people selling fentanyl at a higher, you know, we need to hold them accountable. But on the same news story, they talk about how, you know, we need to make a push for legalized marijuana, so. Um, we don't deal with it a lot in Beltrami County, because unfortunately we have a lot worse. We're, we're looking for, you know, people that. Uh, are selling fentanyl. I will give a shout out to the Beltrami County Attorney's Office. We have several cases there right now for prosecution for third-degree murder. Uh, which is a statute that if you provide drugs to somebody that leads to an overdose death. Uh, that's an element of third-degree murder and I think we have. Four or five that are awaiting murder trials. For doing that.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, Joe, that was a, a pretty, uh. Interesting, um, PowerPoint presentation, um. Most of the questions I had, uh, you, you answered, you know, I, I was wondering, you know, how many overdose. Have overdoses and deaths there have been. Um, I mean, what are the current prevention efforts happening? Uh, you did mention, uh, partnering with, uh, Face It Together, um. And, and Narcan and things like that. Uh, I'm not too sure how much of that is, is working or helping. Um, but my hopes are that, uh, that there are. Other preventive efforts happening as well. Not too sure, uh, well, I, I put, can you, can you overdose from touching these drugs? Um, or, or the, uh. I heard a couple of comments and conversations with folks that, you know, it could be on money. You could be, uh, you can overdose. By touching money or, or, um. You, you mentioned the, the envelopes or, or the paper packets. You can overdose from, from touching that. I, I'm not too sure. If that's a scare tactic or, or if, if there's some truth to. I, I don't know. I mean, I, I. Uh, I don't even know if I should be touching or what, what I can and can, you know, um, touch.
So fentanyl is like twenty to fifty times stronger than heroin. It is strong. Uh, dermally. Our skin is a, is a great barrier. Uh, there was some scare tactics that were put out in twenty seventeen. The DEA released a video called Roll Call and it was showing. Police, they would touch fentanyl, and I'm not saying not to be cautious with it, but they would touch it. And it was, they would overdose, right? And there was this huge spike in law enforcement overdoses. And we see it as cops, you know, it comes across different training medias that we see. Uh, but then when they started really looking into it, a lot of it boiled down to. That wasn't the effects of fentanyl. It was, and, and actually their symptoms weren't even, you know. Didn't correspond with it. They were showing more signs of, uh, anxiety, you know, elevated heart rates, not the, the depressed heart rates. And they realized that they had really scared a lot of people. So in twenty eighteen. Customs and Border Protection released this video called Fentanyl, The Real Deal, and I can't get it to play on a PowerPoint. But basically it's two cops, one great big burly guy. And a smaller petite female and they're chasing a guy and they get into a motel room and he grabs a gun and his hand comes up and it's covered in powder. And he starts freaking out and he's like, what's, what should I do? What should I do? And she looks at him and she's like, wash your hands, you dummy. Like, and that's the reality. Wash your hands. Now, with that being said, I'm talking about adults, right? Um, dermally, it's probably not going to, i- i- it's not going to affect you. There's a lot of medical doctors who have said it will not affect you. You cannot overdose from touching. The problem is children. Um, you know, if a child touches something, where's their hand go immediately after they touch it? Right into their mouth. And we've had, uh, several overdoses in the area. Um, the first one was in Leech Lake a couple of years ago. Where there's an unresponsive child and God bless. God bless the EMS people over there. They're like. Let's try Narcan. And they did, and it woke the kid up. Because the kid, you know, probably looking for his bottle or his, you know, nook and. Hands in the mouth. Um. If you're touching something that you don't know what it is. Wear gloves. Um, I tell law enforcement, have a buddy with you, have Narcan with you. Uh, if you suspect something has fentanyl on it, just stay away from it. Call law enforcement. We at least have the proper, you know, protection equipment to handle it. Uh, but we've even got to a point where. We won't even open up if we suspect there's fentanyl in a bag to test it. Unless we have both have N ninety five masks on, we have Narcan there and we have a buddy with us. So. There is some threats to it, but I think some of it's a scare tactic.
So, uh, you you mentioned Narcan and and things like that, where. Where were, you know, a person that doesn't have that experience or or I mean, like my myself. You know, I I. I I don't carry Narcan. Uh, where where can I get some? And and do you need to have some specific training to? To do, uh, administer Narcan or or anything like that, um? I mean, I I'm out in the community a lot, you know, and I you just never know, you know, what kind of situations that that you might be. Uh, walking into, um.
I've been pushing for it to get into. Public places, schools particularly. Um, the one place that I know that has Narcan is Face It Together and they do trainings. It's a pretty quick training. It's pretty simple. Um. And there's different types of Narcan, but I guess I would point you towards Face It Together just because I partnered with them on some. Some different trainings and media bits. Uh, and they could probably push in the the right direction too.
All right, that's that's good to know because. Uh, currently, you know, the the county has some opioid opioid funding. And maybe, maybe we can, um. Start some sort of Narcan training or or help, uh, you're really collaborate with partners with some of that money because I. Not too sure what, uh. What we're gonna do with that money, you know, other than build. More space. It seems like there's another preventative program that that could use, uh. Some some funding as well. Um. Uh, maybe another question I had is, uh, you you showed pictures of of, uh. Uh, seized products and and, uh. Uh, and guns. What what happens to the to the products and guns once they're, once they're seized?
Um. They're destroyed.
Okay.
Um. We have at times. Uh, sold forfeited items to, uh, we've sold firearms to federal firearms dealers. Illegal items we do not, obviously. But we have a. Uh, we're actually in between contracts three M. Uh, they're incinerator. We burned a lot of, that's where that's where most of our stuff goes to be burned.
Okay. And the final thing is, uh, uh, there was mention of of marijuana. You know, it's, I think it's. You know, we're we're at a time where there's a a lot of opinions and and interesting discussions. And I would hope that, uh. We can have another conversation in regards to that sometime in the future. Um, especially with with, uh. With what the state, uh, may be proposing and things like that, um. You know, I'm not too sure if the if the Sheriff Sheriff's Association and the County Attorneys Association. AMC, you know, things like that, where where they. Stand on on, uh, miracle marijuana, whether that's, uh, recreational or or, uh. Uh, medicinal, so, um. Uh, it's, uh, I I would hope that we can have a conversation, you know, once. Once we figure out what's gonna happen at the legislature.
I'd be happy to be involved in any conversation.
Thank you, Joe.
The the conversations, that's what gets people better understanding on both sides of every every line.
I appreciate you coming today.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Joe, and and, uh, I'm sure Joel Goold. Joe would, uh, it's probably gonna get ahold of you too.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to talk.
Okay, thanks. All right, we're gonna move right on to, uh, Keep It Clean Initiative.
Good afternoon. Uh, I'm Brent Rude, uh, General Services Director and SWCD District Manager. I brought Robin Dwight with. She is the, uh. Are you the president of the Upper Red Lake Area?
I am.
Okay, I thought you were a. Um, a question and statement at once. Um, this is actually a, um. A positive discussion about a not so positive issue that we're seeing play out in Beltrami County. Robin is the local that's, yeah, really helping put this forward. So I'm gonna. Turn it over to her after a a little bit of introduction, but, um. The Keep It Clean Campaign began over ten years ago in Lake of the Woods County. Um, to address the growing problem of garbage and human waste left on frozen lakes everywhere. We've been receiving complaints and hearing concerns for many years about the same issues on Upper Red Lake. But we have not had success in finding. Any local partners or funding to address the issue. In two thousand twenty two, that changed. Um, Rob and her husband Brian and the Upper Red Lake Area Association agreed to be the the leaders in that locally led effort. And together, um, Zach from our SWCD office and myself and Robin and the Upper Red Lake Area Association. We kind of came up with a, uh, potential funding plan and secured funding. To, um, put forward an initiative that's gaining traction statewide, actually. Uh, the presentation here today is kind of all about highlighting partnerships. The the top three on our list. Are are kind of who's working together on this Beltrami County initiative here. Lake of the Woods SWCD has spent a lot of time helping us with. What they've been doing for the last ten years, what's worked, what hasn't worked. Um, Red Lake Watershed District has been a a major funding source. The the rest of them are all. Um, equally as important just on different levels. Um, and also I want to say right now we have partners in multiple counties across the state who are joining the initiative. Um, because they see the same problems and they also lack the resources to provide sustainable solutions. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Robin, um. And I'm gonna, while she's talking, I'm gonna pass out a a little letter we have and then, um.
We'll explain that as well.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for hearing us today. Can you hear me quite well? Thank you. Uh, hopefully. Uh, the next thing you will be hearing is a message from one of our friends.
When winter comes to Minnesota, you may have noticed our lakes freeze and ice anglers appear in big numbers. Hi, everybody. Ron Shara here. Yes, the sport of ice fishing is booming. From traditional ice shacks. To comfortable fish camp trailers, and it's all good. Good for the business of fishing, good for local economies, resorts and bait shops. And it's good for the soul. As winter anglers seek the peace and solitude on a frozen landscape, yes, often the fish bite as well. But we have an ice fishing problem. A nasty problem. A pollution problem, and frankly, an embarrassing problem. Garbage and human waste are being left on Minnesota lakes. Yep. Garbage and poop left on the ice. In the spring, this garbage and human waste infiltrates our waters. Sinking to the bottom or washing up on shore. Something must be done to fix this issue. And you can do it. First. Make a plan before you arrive. Many access points and resorts offer garbage collection services and porta potties. If there's no service, make a plan to transport your garbage and waste home for disposal. Second. Use colored bags in snowy conditions. Colored bags are easier to see, making it less likely that you'll accidentally leave trash and waste behind. Third. Keep your garbage and human waste off the ice. Store it in your vehicle, trailer or fish house. Make sure it's secure before traveling so that it doesn't blow out of truck beds or off trailers and sleds. Fourth. When leaving the ice, check for trash. Pick up any garbage in your area. If someone else has left something behind, please take it with you. Fifth. Allow time and bring the tools you need to move or remove your fish house. Take support blocks, insulation, landscaping fabric, wood and other materials with you and properly dispose of them. So. Whether it's your garbage or you do number two. Take it with you when you do. Fish need not swim in your own waste. Or your next filet might have that taste. We need clean fishing water, folks, and that's a fact. Come on, anglers. Let's clean up our act. Be nice to our ice.
This message was brought to you by the Keep It Clean Campaign. And its partners. Beltrami, Lake of the Woods, Roseau, Malax, Aiken and Crow Wing SWCD. Minfish. Malax Area Community Foundation. Lake of the Woods Tourism. And the Upper Red Lake Area Association. Funding for this message was brought to you by the Clean Water Land and Legacy Amendment and Technical Service Area Eight.
There we go. Okay, so that was one of our big projects this year. Um, in Beltrami County, our Upper Red Lake Area Association and local stakeholders. Partnered with the Soil and Water Conservation District, as Brent said. So Zach and I are the spokespersons and the local managers of campaign. We visited with local residents and business people. They shared firsthand accounts and provided dozens of pictures that weren't very pretty. We started looking at available data as well to get an understanding of the scope of the human waste problem at Upper Red Lake. So you can see here that close to sixty thousand shelter licenses were issued in the twenty twenty one year. And three, and that was just in three major categories, far more licenses than that, but these were the ones that I highlighted. Because they were relevant to ice fishing. You know, and the Creel survey data. That we looked at. Was, uh, not intended to measure overnight stays for our purposes, and not all lakes in Minnesota have Creel Creel surveys. However, the report showed a conservative number of seventy nine thousand trips to Upper Red Lake. Over the twenty to twenty twenty one winter fishing season. With two point four million angler hours reported. So that's a lot. So we pretty much have a pretty good idea of the number of people out on the lake. With a good understanding of the number of people visiting our frozen lakes and with evidence of what they leave behind. Our Keep It Clean Committee began to work both locally and regionally on a Keep It Clean Initiative to bring about the changes we believe. Would be necessary and sustainable. At Upper Red Lake, we had town hall meetings to learn how we could work together to change the culture and human behavior. We collaborated with NGOs and agency folks who agreed with our mission and who subsequently provided support and funding. For our media campaign and our human waste removal pilot program. We provided resources to lake businesses and developed our own media outreach through a new website and Facebook page to encourage lake visitors. To change. Their behavior and bring trash and waste off the ice. In spite of our efforts, we still see evidence that too many people have little to no respect for our natural resources and who continue to ignore local ordinances. Taking the easiest way out with their trash and sewage. So this was a. Couple of weeks ago and we questioned what was in that ditch. The loose liquid and we know what was in the bag. And we weren't equipped at that time to pick it up. We tried to, but we just didn't have the protective equipment to pick that stuff up. So most of the waste that comes off the lake, including general trash and toilet bags, have gone into dumpsters on shore wherever they are available. Which have then to be hauled at considerable expense to businesses, to local transfer stations and landfills as mixed solid waste. Some resort owners place portable toilets next to their rental units for their customers' comfort. Plastic toilet bags are once again the problem to be solved. One resort owner is attempting to hire a pumper to remove sewage from his portable toilets. But this is costly and large trucks just will not drive onto the frozen lakes. Businesses at Upper Red, Lake of the Woods and Malax Lake all have one thing in common. They lack the infrastructure and they lack the resources to be effective enough. Thanks to partnerships with local businesses, Keep It Clean at Upper Red Lake is operating a fairly successful pilot program this winter. Well. Many local businesses are sharing our message and using the resources we have provided. So you can see that there's a lot of signage showing how to use those dumpsters. We just didn't put the dumpsters out at four different locations. We put signage out and we put messaging out to help people. Um, and there's a display of, um, toilet bags that we have there which are free to people that want to go out on the ice and don't come prepared. We also placed large attractive signs at eight lake accesses with our message. Had a few volunteers go out to put those up. Um, our business has a contract, or pardon me, one of the businesses, not ours. One of the businesses up there has a contract for the use of portable toilets for their customers. At our recent stakeholder meeting, lake businesses estimated that seventy five percent of the lake passes are issued for folks who drive on the ice and find their own campsites. So for them, garbage and waste removal is their responsibility. Um, the businesses only can do so much. They allow people onto the lake, but a lot of people go their own way. So in a perfect world and at a distance, ice fishing and winter camping are memorable experiences. But too often, this is the reality. Zach and I rode on the lake a couple of weeks ago and we had no trouble taking pictures of human waste and other garbage. And Zach very boldly picked up a lot of it, so I give him a lot of credit for that. Anglers and sportsmen who have enjoyed a lifetime of fun on the ice are sometimes the same folks that leave a trail of waste. Unaware that their small contribution adds up. Change is not easy, but it is time. There are others who don't mean to pollute the waters, but who arrive unprepared to remove the trash that freezes to the ice when they leave. So you may say that it's a big lake with a large volume of water and that dilution is the solution to pollution. These dots are just the portable shelters on early ice at Upper Red Lake within the camera shot. When these folks leave, the wheelhouses roll in, turning the frozen landscape into a city. There we go. Our dumpster program helps folks to do the right thing. But we can see ways of improving this strategy moving forward. Helping lake businesses to develop better waste solutions is a keep it clean priority at Upper Red Lake. The resources and guidelines we put in place here are already being seen as a model for good practice by our keep it clean partners across the state. We're eager to work with you to bring about strategies to lake businesses. Some of whom are not following best practices at this time who could really use help to do better. So we are increasing our messaging and building partnerships with local, regional and state partners. Another piece of our puzzle is the inconsistent approach to regulation and enforcement. How is the state responding to the ice tourism phenomenon as it unfolds? Our Keep It Clean members are taking those questions to legislators, conservation officers and law enforcement. The short answer is is that improvements could be made. Right now, we are working closely with partners from the MPCA and the DNR to help change human behavior. We are counting on grant funding from the Board of Water and Soil Resources. And the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and the Red Lake Watershed District and the Red Lake Nation to continue our work. Our committee members have garnered support for new legislation that deals with activity on ice covered waters. From the Minnesota Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts. Mark Holston, the Executive Director of Minfish. Bob Meyer, the Deputy Commissioner of the DNR. And Brian Martenson, representing AMC. Association of Minnesota Counties. To name a few. So legislators introduced this bill today, I think. I'm not totally sure because they keep bouncing it around. But we believe that it was jacketed and that it's going to go to committee, um, today. Uh, this bill was carefully crafted with input from everyone we've been working with since our efforts began. This is truly a grassroots effort. So I just wanted to prove to you that there is a bill there. Uh, you can't really read it. But I just wanted to share with you that the bill is a law saying that it will be illegal to discharge or place. Any human waste or garbage on the ice. And why would we think that that needs to be done? Because there's lots of laws in place about trash. But not specifically about the surface of the ice during the winter. So we needed to include that language to make sure that. Um, those rules are there so people understand what you are and are not supposed to do. And so instead of just placing things on the ice, now you were, you would be required to put it in a container or in your property. It's common sense, but that's not what's going on up there right now. So, um, this is the bill we had introduced. And, um, the second part of that bill, which requires a little bit of work is the, um. I guess it would be the appropriations part of it. So going forward, we're counting on this legislation to provide counties with the support they need to protect the. Waters of the state and the people who use them all year round. And this is another long conversation I could have with you about how this might look. And I know that, um, the Senator who is authoring the bill. And the people that are co-authoring it are still trying to figure out how that funding mechanism would be, but it's a real. Positive conversation that we're having with them. So, um, we're really hopeful that this will be, um, passed into law this session. So thanks to the overwhelming support of the people that we meet along the way. Were able to push forward and bring about the changes needed to keep ice angling and camping. A positive and sustainable and very memorable experience for. to keep ice angling and camping a positive and sustainable and very memorable experience for everyone. And that slide just lists some of our partners. One of them looks pretty familiar to all of you, I'm sure. And it shows, this comes from our website that shows some of the rules people can look at when they go there about how to take care of the lake. And then there's a list on the left-hand side of new partners that we have. And that list has changed since I made this slide. So people are excited about what we're doing and very hopeful that'll, it'll lead to some positive change. So on that note, I will mention to you also that we have a letter that we are sending to state legislators tomorrow. And I'm also going to be sharing that letter as soon as our bill gets a number and it goes public with Tim Spielman from Outdoor News. He wants to do a big article about what we're doing. And I've said, just, let's just wait until we see that bill, see the light of day before we talk a little bit more about it. But I'm sharing the letter with you that I also sent to Brian Martenson with the Association of Minnesota Counties. So he's read this letter and he's approved it. And so this is probably the one that we'll be sharing out. Any questions or?
Thank you, Robin. Are there any questions from the board at this point?
Great work, Robin.
All right, keep going. We're not done yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Well, thanks, Robin and Zach and the entire Keep It Clean Committee, including the Upper Red Lake Association. We do appreciate the work that you have. Thanks, Chair, for allowing the time to, for Robin to come up and make a presentation. I know she's, she's very busy. They have an association meeting this evening. So what I just want to make mention that, you know, this, this topic here is gaining a lot of traction and attention throughout the state. You know, especially if there's, you know, a bill in place. But it's sad that, to think that most people would think that we wouldn't have to remind folks to keep it clean. You know, I mean, we should be responsible adults and enjoy this, this luxury that we have, you know, to, to go ice fishing. I mean, I love it and I always try to make sure that I take minimal so I don't have to bring it all in with the, with my hundred and fifty walleye, so. And thank you, Robin.
Okay, let's move on to Joe Skerek. Joe, I'll let you introduce the topic and what you have to say.
All right, sounds good. Yeah, so I'm here, I was asked to give a little update on the twenty-twenty-two assessment for Property Taxes Payable Twenty-three. Just to go back and explain a little bit more of how that process takes place and some of the changes that we had. And so maybe quickly. So obviously, we were in a very inflated housing market currently, higher than any market I've seen since I've been doing this for like thirty-some years. When we've had increases this last year in twenty-twenty-two, this is what the increases ended up being. So we're looking at ag lands, rural lands at twenty percent increase. Residential properties were up twenty-five. Seasonal properties were up thirty, apartments fifteen and commercial fifteen. Those are, those are large value adjustments in one year. And a lot of the residential that would be on water would be more similar to the seasonal. So we've seen probably thirty percent increase on a lot of residential that were on lakeshore also. And so, you know, why did we make those big adjustments? Sale, sale, sales. That's the data that we get to tell us what the market is. From that data, we determine, you know, how much the market's going up for each different type of property, commercial apartments, residential. And so what we get is in twenty-twenty-one, our sales that we used for our twenty-two assessment, we had about twelve-hundred-and-seventy-four sales. A thousand eighteen were considered good sales. So that means two-hundred-and-fifty-six were rejected. Anytime you look at data, you want to make sure you're using good data to make sure that you have a good data source for making your adjustments. So sales that would be, you know, relative sales, sales to a business partner. You know, there's lots of different reasons why a sale may be rejected. Partial interest, you know, there's just a lot of different things that would not indicate a true value of what that property sold for. And so we go through those and we sort them out, we look at them, as does the Department of Revenue. They look at those same sales and we go through them with them. In the end, we agree that we had a thousand eighteen good sales, seven-hundred-and-eight residential sales that we were going to use in our study to determine what property values would be. So it's kind of a statistical analysis of that point. Once you get your data, we look at ratios, coefficient of dispersion, price-related differential, stratification amongst different values. Coefficient of dispersion is how tight the sales are. We want to try to value as many properties as we can as close to market. If we're doing a good job, the coefficient of dispersion is small. If the bell curve is real wide, then we got a lot of span in what our ratios would be. And so that would not be as desired. Price-related differential is looking at the different types of properties, like high-valued properties versus low-valued properties. We'd want to be about the same distance from market of what they're actually selling for in all of those different types of properties. We wouldn't want to be being at a hundred percent on high-valued properties and being at eighty percent on lower-valued properties or vice versa. So that measures if we're doing valuing property throughout that whole spectrum of value appropriately. And if we weren't, we would make adjustments in how we value those properties on a square foot basis in our schedules. And then stratification, we can take out, you know, different groups of properties and look what the ratios are of, you know, values from a hundred to a hundred and fifty. Those ratios should be similar to a hundred and fifty to two-fifty. And if they're not, we can also go in and, and look at how can we adjust those values, all making it so that everybody's paying their fair share more equally is what the effort is there. But a lot of it gets down to statistics. And so if of our seven-hundred-and-eight sales, last year we were at seventy-four-point-seven-two percent. If you basically, from the Department of Revenue, we need to be between ninety and a hundred and five percent. So we'd have to take a twenty-five percent increase of that ratio to get to ninety-three-point-four-four. So in other words, if we had a property that sold for a hundred thousand and we were at seventy-four-thousand-seven-hundred, that's our seventy-four percent ratio, we would have to increase that value of that home to ninety-three-four based on a twenty-five percent increase. And then our ratio would be at ninety-three-point-four, which is where we would fall in between ninety and a hundred and five percent for the state to kind of leave us alone. And so that's just an example of how ratios work. That's looking at the county as a whole. We actually go through and look at each township, look at it township by township. What are the sales in that township? How are we doing on our ratios? We would also look at it lake by lake if we have enough data to do that. And so it's, the sales data tells us where we need to go. We don't take out our crystal ball and rub it and see if we need to go up or down. It's historical data that's already happened. We take that, break it down and, and look at what we need to do from there. And so other reasons that values would change, we're also required to do quintile reassessments. And so every year, twenty percent of township is looked at and revalued and remeasured. We continue to do that every five years for every, every area. That's when we, you know, get our physical view of the property and make sure that we have all of our data right and all that kind of thing. In between there, we make market adjustments on a yearly basis. So just because we've been through a property doesn't mean the property value might not go up again because based on sales, market adjustments may happen every year. And not all property sees the same value changes because definitely from one township to another, one township may need to go up, everyone may be, doesn't need to move much at all. And also, lake by lake, we look at those values. And so because of that, sales data in one area might be quite different than another. And so that's always going to be the case that things, things change. This is a timeline, I guess, so that we can see where we're at. So for the twenty-two assessment, pay twenty-three taxes, we looked at sales from October first of twenty-twenty through September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one. That's statutorily our timeframe we have to look at, those sales. Then, once we make that analysis, we value all property based on January second of twenty-twenty-two. Then we go, we send out in March the valuation notices, which everybody would have received with those large increases. And then we also held our border reviews between April, May. For everybody in the county, they have a chance to come in and talk with us, which was a very busy year this year. And then in county, the county board is usually around June twentieth, twenty-first, I think it was this year. And we, you know, we continue to handle the appeals. Finally, in November, we send out our TNT notices with our proposed tax statement. And then in March, again, we're going to send that from the value noticed last March. Now we're actually sending out the tax statement with that new tax for the twenty-two pay twenty-three in March. And the first half will be due in May, second half, October. So that's kind of the timeline of what that twenty-two assessment pay twenty-three looks like. I don't know if there's any questions on that at this point in time?
Does any of the board have a question?
Go ahead, John. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the quintile, just every five years, are you physically going out and looking at people's properties? Is that? Is that, did I understand that right or not?
Yes.
Okay.
By statute, we need to at least view every property once every five years.
Okay.
You know, if the same person has been doing that property, we still need to stop, look at it, make sure it's all still there. That's by statute a requirement for us to do that. In between the five years, you know, then we still may, maybe we'll do market adjustments. But we do view properties at least once every five years.
And then just as a follow-up, just to emphasize, it sounded like it's not a whim by Joe Skerek that we raise your property. The state is telling us that we have to be within certain parameters. I think it's important for people to understand that.
Yes. Yeah, the state requires that on an average, and, and there's, I was talking about the seven-hundred-and-eight sales for residential countywide. The state actually looks at that township by township. And so that's what I do, you know. And some townships might need a twenty percent increase, some may need thirty percent increase. Whatever the sales indicate is what we're going to have to make our adjustments to get that township in compliance between ninety and a hundred and five percent. So if they were at eighty percent, we need to adjust those values so that they're between ninety and a hundred and five percent. And that's on kind of an average of the sales. You know, you're going to have some highs, some low, but we're kind of looking at an average. The state also says we have to have six sales or more before they would mandate that, that we follow that. You know, so townships that don't have six sales, it doesn't mean we're going to leave them alone, but the state at least isn't going to be looking over our back on those. But we treat those basically the same as all other townships. The sales we do have are going to make adjustments for them.
John, a follow-up. So then to follow up with that, Joe, if the state is making us do that, what do they do if we don't do that?
That's a good point because basically then they come to me and go, okay, you need to increase your values, you know, five percent more, ten percent more, whatever it might be to get to that. I've done those increases once before. The follow-up pushed it to that could be what happens if I don't do that. Typically, they tell us that, you know, then they can withhold, you know, funding from everywhere, from pilt to road, roads and all kinds of things. So, you know, they do have that ability to withhold funding is, is the bottom line. However, just to follow up on the state, I mean, so I've been doing this a long time and I think I was the county assessor now for ten years, eleven years, something like that. The very first year I was the county assessor, I did have a state order in one township. And it really wasn't too troublesome. It was a five percent township-wide and that's probably what I would have done, so it really didn't, you know, affect a lot of things. But they do a lot of just blanket increases and sometimes the sales that maybe are lower on a lake and maybe just increasing that lake would have taken care of the, the problem. And then everybody pays accordingly the proper amounts where if it's a blanket increase, it doesn't always happen that way. But if I do my job correctly and the state isn't involved, then that I think is the best scenario. And so the state has not had to, you know, intervene in the last, you know, nine, ten years. It also, there is no issue with the state, you know, setting values or anything like that as long as, you know, I, the county assessor, makes the appropriate adjustments that need to be made. And I think that's where we should be.
Craig? Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Did Joe, did I miss it or did you have a prediction for what the twenty-twenty-four? If it's going to go up or down or is that the next slide?
That's the next slide. Because if you look at where we're at now in March of, of twenty-twenty-three, we're sending out value notices again here very shortly, like in the next couple of weeks. We got to wrap up our values. So I've made the analysis already for, you know, twenty-three pay twenty-four and we're making our final adjustments. And so, yeah, it is the next, next slide, basically, you know, getting ready to send out value notices. This is about what we're seeing. Ag lands and, and rural lands are, we're right where we need to be. We're at about ninety-three, ninety-four percent of the sales that have occurred. We don't need to make any adjustments. So that maybe part of the market has topped out and we're sitting good. Residential, unfortunately, we're probably going to need to see ten percent overall. Seasonal, similar apartments, commercial, this year, they all seem to be falling pretty much in line, needing that ten percent increase. Now, that's kind of on an overall, because just for an example, Waschkis Township or Red Lake, Red Lake in general is going to need to see about a twenty-five percent increase. So even though the county might see about a ten percent overall in residential, there are a couple of townships and a couple of lakes that are going to see more than that because the market still shows that's a strong market. And Red Lake is one of them. So with that, there will be certain townships that are a little more, I don't think there'll be, well, we do have a couple of townships that are only going to need five percent. You know, so the housing and, and stuff is tapering off, but we certainly still haven't seen them go down. If that does come to that point where, you know, the market is going the other way, obviously we make those changes also. But we're still in an inflating market at this time.
Okay, so Joe, do you want to kind of wrap it up a little bit there?
That is my last slide, so now just if there's any other questions.
Mr. Chair. Joe, you missed the pitch to encourage the new commissioners to sign up for the, for the training. So I guess I would offer that to Commissioner Carlson and Gould that there's, that there is training available for, for this. And what, do we need two commissioners?
Is that? We need at least one to be, to have that training or we can't hold a meeting, which would be very bad. So because it's very bad, we'd like to have at least two, three, everybody could have the training. I think the training's good, just gives you a little basis of how the meetings are, are held and what you can do in them. I know Mr. Anderson just took the training recently and I think Craig, you took it a while back. So we do have a couple of people, which is awesome, but I'd recommend.
Um, you took it a while back, so we do have a couple of people, which is awesome, but I'd recommend to everybody, you know, take the training.
Um, just give you a little basis of what the meeting, how the meeting's supposed to be held and what you can do and can't.
And what, is there a time, timeline for the other folks to do it or can, do they do the training in another month other than?
Um. You might be able to take the training um through the end of February. And then there'll be a time where they'll turn it off for a little while and maybe not turn it back on. But we, because we do have, you know, two commissioners that are already um had the training and are certified, it's not a real rush for that. But, you know, just encourage you, it might not be a bad thing to take when you do have time.
Is that an online thing?
Yeah, yeah, maybe an hour, hour and a half.
Yeah, I think it's only forty-five minutes.
Yeah, it's pretty simple.
Joe, would you be willing to send out uh an email? Maybe to just all of us and then especially for us new ones that, so we know how to get on and look at that.
Sounds good. Will do. I'll get it to Diana, make sure. I don't know if I have everybody's email address.
So just to follow up on Commissioner Gosvig's question about the, the plateauing or maybe even of, of the, the going down. When's the last time we ever reduced property values?
Uh, we have, and I've been here long enough, so I was able to see that.
Okay.
Um, I think in two thousand seven and two thousand eight, we actually seen reductions. Um, what led up to that was four, five, six, seven years of pretty healthy increases, double-digit inflation, but not, not into the twenties or thirties type stuff. But uh, you know, ten, twelve percent over a number of years. So we did have a market that was quite high. But when it came back down, we really only seen back-to-back years of maybe three, four percent reductions. It wasn't a big swing back down. Um, now one of the things is, you know, because it kind of started coming down, we probably didn't have to raise that last year. We could just kind of hold, uh, because it maybe had kind of come up and come down some. So maybe the overall effect from the market was a little more than, you know, maybe it was ten percent. But value-wise, we only made four or five percent increases or decreases for two years. So it's kind of a lot less than the increase, I guess. So people still didn't think it was enough at that time. But we did go down um during that time period because that's what the market indicated.
As you, as you do these final numbers, just make sure that you raise the ones in Gould and Summers or yours.
Since they're not here.
All right, thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. And I'm sure if we get a lot of calls, we'll be calling on you as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah. This last year was a unprecedented amount of calls. I'm sure that'll continue moving into the next year. And if anybody has more questions or wants more detail, um, you know, I brought uh you know, files of data. So, you know, if that's really what you want to do, stop in and chat.
I'd like to get the, that spreadsheet that I got from you before that actually has the township by township.
Yep. And that I will get to you. I usually actually uh come before the board. Um, sometime before April, uh, because then I'll have that and uh give you the little spiel on what's going on. Um, so I still maybe will plan on doing that if uh there's time allows, uh, maybe the last weekend. Uh, last week in March or something like that, so another month.
I think we'll need to do that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, and then we have Bruce Asbargan.
If it's okay, could I do the border-to-border touring route first?
You may.
Karen from the DNR is here and that way she, you doesn't have to.
Okay.
Sit through the township maintenance agreement.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Hi, I'm Karen Pottis. I um work for Minnesota DNR Parks and Trail. Um, and did you want to go over, do you want me to just?
Yeah, I'll just give a quick summary. It's uh, this project, uh, the state has been working on this for a few years. Actually, I tried to look back through the board agendas and I couldn't find it, but we've uh discussed it in the past. And uh, this project is to put a touring route across northern Minnesota, border-to-border, so from North Dakota over to Wisconsin Superior. Um, they had came out to the different road authorities, counties initially trying to figure out where to put the route. Uh, some agencies didn't want it. At that time, Bell Trami was open to it. And so now at this point, the route has kind of been determined. And what's in front of you is a draft uh joint powers agreement uh to how this route would be uh established and maintained and taken care of. Um, I guess I'll hand it off to Karen.
Sure, thank you, Bruce. Yeah, so right now the DNR is reaching out to road authorities to get some input before we finish our drafts. Like Bruce said, this started back in two thousand fifteen and basically there's a touring route for highway licensed vehicles that goes from the Shores Lake Spear to North Dakota. And uh, right now we're reaching out to get inputs on that joint powers agreement. There's some responsibilities of the DNR and that of the road authorities, and that's what I'm bringing forward today. I do have a copy of it. Um, basically, I don't know if you'll have much time to really go over it now. Um, I'm going to have Bruce be the main contact if you don't mind with any um ideas, improvements, comments, edits that you have. Uh, the DNR is definitely still in that draft phase. Uh, we have a management plan draft as well. Hopefully come spring, summer, we'll put that out to public review for a thirty-day notice. At that time, that will be public for you all as well to have any input that you'd like. Um, and then hopefully the, the route will be implemented end of the summer, midsummer. I don't know if you folks have heard of it before. Um, I, basically, if you have any questions, just throw them my way and I'll answer what I can.
Okay, who would like? Jim?
Mr. Chair, um, I, I thought this was brought to the county board a, a number of years back. And I think at that time, the board was uh not in support or in favor of, of uh pursuing this border-to-border. And to me, this route looks a little different than what it was back then. Um, what, what has changed and how is this coming forward again?
Sure. Oh, go ahead.
I guess I, I believe the county was in support of it at that time. They were open to it. Um, we didn't turn it down because I know like Clearwater County, they just said, no, we had nothing to do with it, but my quick collection, I was trying to, there's no more action out there to find, but uh, at that time, it was a work session, a discussion item like this.
Yeah, and I, and I, and Bruce, I think there was some dissension at that time as well, but I think uh it was a feeling of, well, let's see what keeps going on or what's going to happen. But I know that there was some um people that.
There's a group, a group of people that came up from, uh, I think from, from district four to, to voice their opposition. Might have been even uh a couple of folks from.
One from Clearwater as well.
So I mean, I'm not too sure um how this uh, I guess what has changed, you know, may, maybe. Maybe things are different. I, I don't know, but I would like to, you know, hear from folks from, from, you know, my district uh before I uh support anything, uh, because as, as the map, you know, indicates and shows. Uh.
Commissioner, to my knowledge, uh, so I wasn't working on this project back in two thousand fifteen. Um, to my knowledge, between two thousand fifteen and seventeen, the route has gone through some changes. Clearwater County is no longer a part of the route. Um, to my knowledge, like Bruce was saying, I believe Bell Trami did support it up to this point. Um, and we do, there's better pictures online. If you need the exact route, um, I can be in contact to. Um, I have, I do have a map printed out there. It's not super detailed.
All right, um, Mr. Chair, because I, I think I also remember at the time Commissioner Winger was also opposed um to this. Um, so I, I guess.
That was lukewarm.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I I, I'm, I, I guess I'm, my position hasn't changed, so that's why I I don't know.
Answer that or a question to follow it up. What happens if the board doesn't, this joint powers agreement or what's that? How is that?
I mean, I'm, I'm not sure if I have the answer to that. Um, there's others uh that are part of the DNR that we'd have to bring it forward and see what we can do. Um, I mean, like I said, this is a draft. So things are amenable. Um, and the idea is we would like um the opportunity to bring this touring route into um Bell Trami County. Uh, the idea is to get folks in the northern portions of our state out enjoying um nature, bringing people in from other areas, um, driving through, hopefully spending some funds as they go through um and exploring Minnes- what Minnesota has to offer. Um, but again, it's in draft form. Um, and we'd have to discuss it then at that point.
Sure. Yes, uh, John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so the question I have is, how are those route, the border-to-border route? How's that, how's any one of those trunks any different than what we already have for OHV usage?
Sure. No, thank you, Krishna. Um, so this is for highway licensed vehicles only. So right now, a person in a highway licensed vehicle can go and drive this route as is. Uh, there's not going to be any improvements on it. This is not an ATV trail. It's on ORV trail. It's for highway licensed vehicles. The idea behind the DNR is trying to sign it and encourage people to use it.
And Bruce, this is not on the uh consent agenda at all. Yeah.
Again, this is just the, the draft form.
Yeah.
Whether.
Right, right. So, okay.
So if I understand it correctly, the only thing that's different is there's going to be some signs up saying this is the border-to-border route.
Uh, yes, there's going to be signs up and there's also going to be maintenance funds available um to maintain portions of the route that needs it. But yes, technically right now, all of these are public roads that are currently open.
Uh, I have a couple of questions as well. Just how does this uh, uh benefit Bell Trami County? Either one of you can answer that.
Uh, I guess my doctor behind it was uh increased traffic. Um, potentially to those remote areas. I mean, it's Kelyer, Black Duck, Waschkish, Fort Town is where that route goes through. Um, so to me, it's.
Tourism.
Tourism, it's, you know, we've got ATV routes. Uh, we don't have any of the off-highway vehicle routes, but there's never some to our east. Uh, so I can picture it like that. It's like, you know, another one is a scenic highway. We've got the, you know, the thirty-nine is our scenic highway. They got them designated to cross the state. That kind of brings in a little bit of tourism and, and riding with it. So that's what I was picturing when I see it, but.
Yeah, I would agree, I would agree with Bruce. Um, the idea is that it gets implemented, um, you know, soon, the soon future. And then it grows and it's, it's um, who knows exactly what it's going to look like? Maybe there's more marketing um for uh towns off the road that want folks to come in and stay at their hotels or visit their restaurants or have some sort of other event there. Um, but it's kind of like, uh, it's growing, it's a growing process, I suppose. But I agree with Bruce, that's a tourism aspect.
Yeah, and we didn't have a public hearing on this when we, it was at a work session and we had some folks there. And I know there were a couple at that time that were townships that I represented that were concerned because um they live in the country for a reason. And to have more people, they were afraid there was going to be a big influx of folks coming through their area. Uh, and I can see the fact within towns, smaller villages or whatever, uh, that that traffic would be helpful. But I'm not sure about the uh, uh, the, the crowdedness or the dusty roads or whether that they might endure with people coming through. So I just um bring that up as a possible issue.
Sure, that's, that's understandable. That's something that the DNR also understands. At this point, it's hard to know how many people per day are going to use the route and how much is going to be increased.
And where, where did it originate from? I mean, who had the idea and then, oops, excuse me, how did that come about?
Is a legislative bill that was introduced in two thousand fifteen, the user groups, um, ORV community, um, excuse me, off-road vehicle community of um the state of Minnesota deemed that this is something that uh was um something that they'd like to um look into and um bring their sport to northern Minnesota.
Okay. All right, just some thoughts.
Sure.
Yep.
Oh, one last question. Border-to-border, once you get to North Dakota, do they have a trail? Once you get to Wisconsin, do they have a trail or is that it?
No, they don't. So the idea is that um Parks and Trails is trying to make Minnesota a destination. Um, and this is like kind of the bare bones part. Um, there's a, there's talk of um that being something that does occur. Not currently now, but again, this is the, the, the start of it all.
Sure. That kind of ties into my question is if, if you knew of any other states in the, at all, anywhere that where this type of thing has been done, and if so, was there any negatives to it, you know, damage to roads? Was it that so popular that you had issues?
Sure, nothing official when we've looked into the research where a state entity has um the move forward with a route like this. Um, so not yet. Do we have any information on it?
I mean, we could call it Route sixty-six north.
Sure.
Well, one of, one of the things that I've learned, uh, having been a township officer and now have been a commissioner, if we don't run it by some of these townships, uh, we get our, our behinds in a jam sometimes. So I think I would feel better if we at least included the townships uh for input that are going to be affected by the route.
Sure, I understand. The DNR did have some public meetings. Um, I think there were four total, uh, two thousand seventeen, I believe. Again, I wasn't involved in that. Um, but those comments from the public at that point were brought into uh the draft plan as well.
Okay. One final, okay, John?
I'm sorry, one final question. So uh magically at twenty forty, are all those vehicles going to be all electric that are coming around?
It could be. Um, right now the DNR does not have any plans to put any charging stations along the route. Who knows? That could be a Minnesota, a Minnesota thing, bringing people in to do that.
Well, I think we should talk to one of our former commissioners, Keith Winger, and have him do that up at his resort, you know, because that's pretty close.
Up on Vol. Yeah.
All right, uh, if there's uh any more questions or comments?
No more uh questions, but I, but I agree with the, with you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I guess I would like to hear, you know, from the public. Uh, you mentioned there's been public comment uh in two thousand seventeen. And what is that, uh, six years ago? I don't know. Um, uh, again, I'm, I'm not in support.
You sound like you might be a commissioner that has that area.
Like I said, the DNR will have public review on our draft once it is finished, and that's likely this summer. Um, obviously, we're here to get your input before that happens, so we can amend the draft if it needs to be. Um, I think at this point, um, I can have Bruce be the contact with any other additional comments. Um, and Commissioner, I'll bring forward um your concerns to other leadership within the DNR as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you for the time.
Hmm.
That issue because I was, I was my first year I was on the board that we talked about this um and that's four years ago.
Yeah, that's why.
And I haven't heard boom since.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's even research, this with the whole electric crap.
Okay, we're on to, thank you, Karen. Uh, Bruce, other topic.
Uh.
All right. Road maintenance agreement.
Uh, the next item I have for you is to implement a township maintenance agreement. Uh, the highway department provides lots of services to uh townships, uh, the biggest being uh blading and winter snow plowing. Um, and we have never had a, a written agreement with them. Um, we do have had forums where we, you know, check a box. If you'd like to have summer blading or check a box if you want winter blading, uh, but that's the furthest that we have gone or done with the townships. Um, but winter plowing and summer blading are just a couple of the services we provide. Um, we do engineering services for some townships. If they got a bridge that uh they want replaced, we uh will help them with that. Um, we've done uh projects together, uh paving projects uh where we, they've got a mile of road that they would like to have overlaid along with our projects. So we've combined with theirs with ours. Um, we've provided materials, winter salt, we provide to a lot of townships uh that have their contracted services. Uh, anything from culverts to motor grader blades. Um, there's quite a bit of materials like that that we also provide uh to townships. Um, I would like to put that uh in writing. Um, there are a couple of reasons. Uh, one is we like to put those terms down on paper. Uh, one for us to tell them what we're going to do. Two, uh, to make sure that they pay for those services, um, and what would happen if they don't. Part of the disagreements we end up with the townships are, uh, especially winter snow plowing. Um, we've had a lot of townships say, well, we only want to be plowed when there's four inches of snow on our roads. We got ones that don't want uh salt. We got ones that don't want the ice scraped or their snow wing back. Um, and over time, we this recently now, we just tell them, you're going to get the service that we provide as we see, we see fit. Uh, it's a lot easier than having that kind of à la carte or specific services for the townships. And so this is along that same lines. Um, there's no questioning. Uh, we're going to provide the service uh just like we do. Uh, we do have a hierarchy how we provide our services. Uh, snow plowing, we do our routes first. Higher traffic down to lower traffic uh on out to these townships or small cities that we do these um do this work for. So that's kind of in place, but again, we want to implement and put this uh in writing with them. I guess uh. Uh, another item that I have down there is we have uh uh townships, additional townships that would like to use our services. Right now, we're maxed out for uh winter plowing. Um, we don't have enough staff to take on. Uh, another township uh that has asked. Uh, unless one would drop off and we could add another township back on, but. Um, with this, I guess I would like to put it out there for all townships. Then we've got all the townships in front of us and we can decide if we're going to, how we're going to staff or if we're going to staff up. Uh, to to address these townships. Again, the worst for us is winter snow plowing. Uh, you got to get it done. Snows, you got to plow the snow. Uh, summer blading. Um, we can usually shift around uh routes and when we do those. Um, so that we're not all crunched and have to, you know, plow all gravel roads at the same time. So winter time is really our crunch time. I guess that's kind of on the agreement itself. The next part is the. How we would charge for our services. So actually, I, I guess I'd like to take any questions first on the agreement or the need for the agreement. Before I jump into the. Charges for services.
Okay, just a question that I have is for uh, there's a fee statement that we usually go through and. And so you've got the fee statement there, but then you also mentioned like for grading and plowing a cost here. Will you be having just the the fee over in 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 the document that they sign? Or is it still going to remain in the overall county fee statement area?
The document will just state the fee as established by the county board.
Okay.
And so it'll be the fee schedule that you adopt every year.
Yeah.
But.
Okay, uh, anyone else have a question?
Playing around the fees. He's going to get to that.
That's what I thought.
Is that the renewal every year agreement with the townships?
Yep, I get.
Uh, you go ahead.
The wording is it's it's in place until someone cancels it, so it's an automatic renewal.
You still, uh, when I was on the town board, I I had that every year going. I liked which which roads we wanted. You still doing that?
Yeah, yeah, that's when we would have a, you know, check the box, provide us a map of what you would like.
Yeah, and took the map and highlighted which.
Yep.
Which road did one snow plow?
Yeah, and we would do the same, actually, uh, working with Kevin and G I S to hopefully at some point get that uh online. Uh, so it can be selected and actually show a better termini of, you know, where to turn around. When you pull up an aerial map, zoom in, you're going to turn around at this intersection or this driveway. Um, that's kind of the hope and intent of where we're going to get is is we can do some online mapping for the townships to to select.
But it makes sense too, Bruce, from the standpoint of just employees, how hard it is to get people now. And if we know that we are going to use somebody for a full-time, that'll be easier to hire than a half-time person. So.
Yeah. So that kind of jumps right into the, it leads right into the the charge, uh, how we would charge for the services. Um, just to explain first, again, the highway department has a a cost accounting system. So everything we do, we're tracking our costs. And if someone's out on a motor grader blading a road, that employee. Puts their time and it's charged to that road. That motor grader has a unit number and it's charged to that road. The motor grader has everything tracked on it. That's bolts, fuels, oils. Um, all repair costs are tracked on that unit number, so we know how much that unit costs to operate. So that's how we set our equipment rates is by how we're tracking all of our equipment costs. And so in the end, we have, you know, labor and equipment, our materials and inventory. Everything has a cost and we're charging. Charge out those services for the work that we do on our roads and also for others. Um, we're required to do that for our state funding. So all of our costs are charged out to our roads and our ones that get state funding. That's how we can uh. Assure that we're giving our allocations, we're charging out for those services. So we've got that cost accounting system and we've done a good job of putting those, again, cost for labor and equipment. And setting our snow plowing rates. However, um. What I am proposing here is that we cover some more of our costs. Um, and the townships, the rates that we would charge the townships would cover more of our costs. Some of our costs are unallocated costs. It's like my time. I'm not. Working on a specific road, plowing a road, engineering a road. Uh, my time is just an unallocated cost that gets spread across to all of our routes. Um, everything from our accountant to supervisors, um, all staff when they're doing training, something that's not specific to a route. Is an unallocated cost. Uh, building, heating, electricity, all those costs are unallocated costs. At the end of the year, uh, cost accounting system, those unallocated costs get spread across to all of our roads. Um, and that is a cost that we've been missing on when we're setting our rates and charging to the townships. And so that is part of the um cost increase that is in here is uh. That I want to make sure that we're covering our costs, all costs to townships. Because right now, it's not fair. I live in Turtle River Township and the county plows our roads in the winter time. We don't for Bemidji Township. And so in the end, you know, some of these other townships, those residents. Um, are not uh getting the benefit of those other townships where they were providing those services for them. And having some of those unallocated costs um being covered by county as a whole. So that is, you know, a a big part of the cost increase side of it, because this is a cost increase, what we're proposing here. The second part of it is changing how we would charge. Instead of by the hour, I'm proposing that we charge per mile. Um, right now, there are employees, when they're out blading a road, snow plowing a road, they're tracking how much time they're charging. And it's not, again, just for our roads, but also for the services that we do for townships. So Turtle River Township gets charged. Whatever, two hours, a motor grader when that operator was out there plowing snow, comes back, puts on his time sheet, and then we uh follow through with uh. Uh, invoice for plowing snow. But uh, we. Want, I guess, with this change, going from an hourly to a to a per mile, that's how we track our costs. For our roads is a per mile basis. We're not doing it by the hour. Again, to help cover those unallocated costs, we can do that when we're doing it by a per mile basis. So we have what we each are or what our average rates are for our our roads. Our paved roads, our gravel roads, it's right down to individual roads, but on average, we have those costs per mile. And so that's how, again, it's easier for us if we go to a per mile uh rate charge. And the other side of it is, is to get away from the questions um on our billing. Why were you out plowing on this day? You know, there was only three fourths of an inch and your policy says you're not going to be out there until there's an inch. Um, on gravel roads, it's four inches accumulated. Well, you know, again, we've had some where we're being questioned on. Why and when you're doing it. And so, again, to get away from the hourly basis and per time basis. We would just have a flat rate and get away from those questions. We're going to provide the services we see fit, which is according to our snow and ice control policy, our summer blading policy. Um, uh, and so really, it's kind of putting it back on us to just do our job. We've got our average annual. Or sorry, yeah, annual and average rates uh for our miles of routes and what it costs us to maintain our roads. And so I guess that's where these rates are coming from, and that's why this is being proposed. Yes, the rates are in the consent agenda portion. Yes.
How long, you know, obviously by the hour now, how long would it take them to to plow a mile of road compared to, you know?
And when I was, when I was looking at that, because uh um. And so we had, we provide some services to certain townships, blading and snow plowing. And so I was trying to figure out to answer that question, and it's a wide variety. It's, you know, one township's going to have. Five miles and the way out Blue Dogs versus, again, Turtle River, which is closer and has thirty some miles. Um, and so they're all over the place on if it's double or triple. Um, it's. The one of the larger ones that we provide services for right now was Turtle River where I'm at. And it's not double, but it is an increase, you know, one and a half to. Something like that about what they, the year that I looked at for them, but.
Further away, you, we're not going to charge them whatever thousand, one hundred a mile.
Nope, 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 it's per. If if they've got five miles they want maintained, they pay for five miles. And so that, that, you know, that's one thing right now for us is, again, we're doing our routes and plowing and blading and everything. And we're trying to fit it in there to do it the most efficiently. Um, but sometimes, you know, we we take care of all like. Yesterday or, sorry, was it yesterday, today, whenever it's known. The guys took care of the county roads. They didn't do much from the township roads. Uh, then now they went out there today and they were getting some of the, you know, like the gravel township roads. So there we are, having to make a specific trip out there to go do that township. But yes, in the end, we're only charging them for the time that's out there currently. In the future, it it's all on us to make sure we're doing it efficiently as we can, and they just pay for however many miles of routes they have.
Okay, I, is there, excuse me, excuse me just a second. Is there a need to have this on the agenda and pass it tonight? Or if we have more questions, because we've actually run out of time for our our work session. And I I don't want you to have to, you know, stand for the for the next meeting, but uh. Many times we're proposed with a topic and we talk about it at the work session, and then we have a couple of weeks. And we bring it up again, and I think that's kind of been a good policy, but I sense that there is, are there more questions? Uh, maybe we should should do that unless there, for whatever reason, you're foreseeing a reason to.
The only thing is I was hoping to, you know, again, get this draft approved. There's no agreements for you to approve. Today, I'm going to get the townships to sign and bring them back here, then you would approve them at that time. Um, however, I want to be, you know, make sure these drafts are good, because the intent would be to go to the townships sometime this spring. Before we enter the the summer blading season.
Right, and they have their March meeting when they uh allocate their monies. So and if they know that there's going to be a big jump in these rates, they need to know that ahead of time before the March uh first Tuesday of March, so. Uh, I I understand that, but I also understand that there's some questions and I feel as a chair, we're uh. Probably better take, is there a reason we couldn't put this back on for uh the next meeting, Tom, or is it already?
Uh, Mr. Chair, thanks for the question. Now, you have a couple of options. One is you could pull it from the consent agenda tonight and continue your discussion on it this afternoon. Or alternatively, you could table it and ask to have it brought back at the next meeting as well.
Uh, what would the wishes of the commissioners be? Should we uh just continue on? Uh, I can stay to the next meeting?
I I think we should do that just because of what you just said, you know, otherwise, we're going to, our next meeting is March seventh and. And that, you know, that that's not going to give them as much time at all before they're.
Right.
Their uh.
Will you have it? Will you have it ready for them before that March meeting anyway? If we give our approval tonight? Will you, will you have time to get your act together to give it to all the townships?
Yeah, I would be sending this out for them as soon as I can.
Okay.
Put them in envelopes.
All right, uh, then uh, do we need a motion for that?
No, sir. You'll need a motion at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, we'll just uh continue this at our next meeting and we'll also do our.
So it needs to be put on the regular agenda.
Yeah.
From the consent.
Right. And and we'll also do Tom's uh report, administrative report. At that next, at the next meeting. Okay, let's uh. Just take a couple of minutes break and then we'll be back here at five after.
I'm glad that the United States of America and every power that we wish to have.
Uh, no general comment from, from the board chair and there's no citizens I see waiting to talk to us. So we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Mr. Chair. I move that we remove item seven G. From the consent agenda and making that uh agenda, item ten A on the regular agenda. And to remove seven J. From the consent agenda, making that item ten B on the regular agenda. And then item ten C on the regular agenda, the administrator's update. Other than that, I move the consent agenda with those. Changes. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 And those that uh. Don't want it? All right, it's approved, four, four, uh, zero. And now we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All, uh, approved. Four zero. All right, our first item is the sheriff's captain wage. Sheriff, do you want to? Discuss that at all?
You guys heard from, uh, good evening again, um, you guys heard from, uh, Captain Klosik or assumed to be Captain Klosik. Uh, tonight with his presentation, he does a really good job for us. He's gonna be missed on our Pauline drug task force for sure. But we sucked him into the administration, um. And I'm here to try to talk to you guys just a little bit about his wage, um. He was, uh. I think at the, his current base wage is forty two ninety six, um, I don't remember what step that is, as uh, he was paid on a class. He was a technically the pay grade of a sergeant as the commander, but it's not, uh. If he were to come out of that position back to a, a field operations position, it would not carry the same, um, the same wage. Um, with his longevity, uh, in his total, uh. For the promotion through the county process at seven and a half percent, it would bring him in at step, between steps seven and eight under, uh. Uh, pay grade fifteen and I'd like to, uh, just. Bring him in at step eight, uh, due to the fact that he is a, an exempt, uh, position with no overtime and no longevity. And that's basically, uh, what I have to address with you guys as far as the. His, his pay.
Along with the four hundred dollar bill.
Yes, I'm sorry, along with the four hundred dollar. Just cut off at the bottom.
Sometimes, uh, Tom, I, I rely on Linda's input on, on some of this with the. Finesse that we. Do with our salary schedule. Is there any? You know, we often use, uh, send it off when we have a change of, of, uh. So that we, we are not as a board necessarily making that decision that without the. Baker Tilly, I believe, is the one we would send it off to.
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, maybe just for a, a little additional context, um. We did not need to send this position off to Baker Tilly, cause it already existed. It was already set in the pay grade. It was already set up in the salary schedule. What essentially we're doing is we're trying to. Uh, develop a, a fair and equitable wage for Captain Klesik's promotion. That aligns with his subordinate staff, those of his laterals and those above him. And to do that, we needed to move him into a step eight on the existing, uh, pay grade fifteen. So what we're doing here is essentially trying to modify his salary. To offer him an equitable position in the pay scale. Uh, at the step in pay grade that we've just spoken about, so that he is compensated appropriately and fairly as it relates to his laterals and his subordinates.
Okay, with that statement, that makes sense. That's up to the board to do that, so.
Sure, and just so you know, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Linda and I were, uh, did, did get into the conversation with, uh. The sheriff and, and chief deputy, had a long conversation about this and felt good about where the position landed.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Chair, so are, are we gonna be doing this with? His replacement or, or how is that gonna be filled and?
Uh, so Captain Klosik is actually transitioning, uh. A, a current investigator into his position, so he'll be moving into an out of class position being paid as a sergeant. There won't. He'll just be moving up into that position.
It'll be the same pay that Klosik would have had.
Correct, uh, with his lo, with whatever, uh, Dave Hart's current longevity and.
Right.
Would be.
Right.
Okay, I was wondering if we were gonna do this again in two weeks.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Second?
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. All right, let's move on to, um, Morrison County contract for jail beds.
So we have an opportunity, uh, Captain, uh, Klandra Allen, uh, has worked out a contract. With the Morrison County Sheriff's Office and I just screwed up my statement, so I apologize. Um, I'll go, I'll wing this, um, and Administrator Barry did a much better job eloquently. Addressing the last thing, so if I miss something, Tom, please feel free.
Not to worry, I can.
Um, no, uh, currently, right now, the, the DOC has a rate that the. That they're getting is about sixty five dollars a day per bed. Um, and a lot of the county sheriff's offices are going to that, that level, that sixty five dollars a day. Uh, we have an opportunity right now to get a contract for twenty beds at fifty five dollars a day. It was initially negotiated at fifty, we weren't able to get it in front of the board in time. Uh, and then the sheriff saw it from Morrison County and says, hey, 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 we need to bump this up. They bumped it up to fifty dollars. We have a thirty or fifty five dollars, we have a thirty day out on either side. And a contract that'll go for one year, barring that someone doesn't wanna get out. So if at some point we decide we, we, we've got the ability to, to increase some of our capacity or the DOC decides that. We have the ability to get out after thirty days. With that reduced rate possible, it's gonna be cheaper for us to house twenty male inmates in Morrison County. At a time versus having to pay the sixty five dollars a day for some of the ones that we're gonna be looking at now with less travel.
A, and as I understand it, it's twenty, whether we have twenty or not, but we'll certainly looks like we're gonna have at least twenty.
Yes, we were actually, earlier this year, we were budgeting that group for twenty, was that not correct?
No, actually forty.
Forty, I'm sorry. And then when the DOC came in and gave us the temporary order, we, we had to increase that, but. Yeah, so we're gonna have a secure, uh, secure those twenty beds for our use. Uh, right now, I think we currently have sixteen inmates down there. And once this contract is approved, i- if it's approved, we will transfer the remaining people from other counties into there or our own, depending on what, where we use that.
Okay, uh, could I have a motion and then we'll have discussion?
Uh, I move, uh, Mr. Chair, that we accept the, uh, contract with Morrison County for twenty additional field beds.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. More questions or?
Is it, when we talk Morrison County, are we talking about in Little Falls or?
Yes, that, that's.
In the city of Little Falls, so, South Lower Drive.
Yep.
And that, is that the closest one that we can get this many beds?
We're, we're trying, so, uh, I talked to Sheriff Clang, um, of Crow Wing County. And they're looking at maybe towards the middle to the end of March, being able to open up one of their wings. And if they do, or if they're, if the DOC allows it because of their staffing levels. We've kind of already started to perpetually talk about a contract with them as well for an additional, uh, bed space, which would be a little bit closer. Oh, actually, it'd be about the same distance, Brainerd and.
Be a little close, probably half hour.
Yeah, a little bit closer, but we would hopefully be able to secure an additional amount of bed space. So we're only traveling to possibly two locations versus like, we're at a dozen different locations. In, in Traverse County, uh, Wright County, we've got a, a bunch of females up in, up in Nathan County, so.
Okay, any other question?
Mr. Chair, so. So can we, uh, submit a, a, a bill to DOC for, for them temporarily, uh. Reducing our capacity, I mean, it, it's kind of a, a joke, but you know, it's. I mean, it, this, this is costing about Trami County, you know, a significant amount of money and I can't imagine. Um, I mean, you, what do we? Twenty beds, you said, in Morrison County?
Yes, sir.
And, and that adds up and that doesn't include the, the, the travel time and, and things like that, correct?
That is correct.
So, so, uh, well, if you, if you have to transport somebody to, to Little Falls, uh, is, is that? You know, per inmate, so does that take away from, from? I guess I'm, I'm not too sure how you do the transports, uh, do, do you book them here? And, and, and wait for maybe two, three more individuals to transport, uh, um.
That's a good question. That's actually an excellent question. So the people that we take into custody are booked in Bell Trami. And then as bed space is or is not available in Bell Trami, depending on our numbers, and then if we prove this contract, I just keep hitting this black. We would transport an appropriate number of inmates down there. That would be more cost effective than the fifty five dollars a day, because right now I've gotta pay a deputy or, or a, or a. Bailiff to drive down there and back, loaded and unloaded, we would. If, if we were unloading and we were taking, picking somebody up to bring back here, we would bring people down there to make it most cost effective. So I can't say that every day there would be twenty inmates in Morrison County. It would be what would be better cost effective for us a- and, and having the linear transport back and forth between Benegie and, 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 uh.
Alright, thank you.
And we do have a ten passenger van that, so if we do end up with a, a, a significant number to return or go somewhere, we can. We certainly try to save costs by using that vehicle versus transporting ones and twos.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm not too sure how they interwork and so. The sheriff's office works with, with transport and things like that, so I mean, it. I mean, if you, if you transported one person, you know, every couple of hours, I mean, that just. Doesn't make sense to me.
It's a Rubik's. When you talk about billing the DOC, I've actually, I've talked to Captain Allen about this. We're actually considering submitting bills to the Department of Human Services with the state because of. The length of time that our civil commitments are staying in our facility past forty eight hours that the state re, that the state requires. So. I don't know that we'll ever see a, a, a payment from that, but. The state of Minnesota needs to step up and start taking care of the mental health issue that's going on in the state for sure.
I know that, uh, St., um, St. Paul or, or, um, Ramsey County is going through a similar situation, so. Is there a potential of, of maybe running out of bed space or, or?
They lost a hundred and fifty beds, that's not easy to swallow in a state, for sure.
So.
That's why we jumped on this contract, tried to get on this contract as soon as possible, because they're gonna be looking for space as well.
Okay, further questions?
Any other questions? If not, a call a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh. Against, opposed, yeah. All right. Fast four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all you're doing. Let's move on now to. All right, back to our engineer.
Sorry about using up all the time on the work session.
I think we started a little bit late. I'll give you a little slack this time.
It's one of those things when Tom asks, well, how much time do you think? Uh, fifteen minutes and sometimes it works and sometimes.
Okay, uh, so as we think back to the discussion we've had before, uh. Are there other questions that, uh? Bruce, was there any other comment that was asked that you wanted to, uh, talk about?
Well, just one comment that I didn't make was, again, in setting these rates. I said in here that we would give a discount if a township wants us to do both blading and winter plowing. Cause that way, that's a, that's not a full time person, but it's. A full time person's time through summer and winter versus having to staff up just for the winter plowing. So there was a discount there if a township is wanting us to maintain a year round. That's one thing I forgot to, to point out in the rates here.
And do we have, I guess, one of the questions I had, do we have quite a few townships now that have? Relied on us for snow plowing and, uh, grading or? Is it more top heavy towards plowing?
Uh, I'm gonna say it's more top heavy to snow plowing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the, I'm gonna say the more rural a township is, the more likely they'll have us do both. It's. Really comes down to, is there other contractors out there? I mean, I. In the end, I would rather contractor took care of a township. You know, if a township would go to a contractor, that'd be great, um. And so in areas like Bemidji, there's contractors around here, um. When you get further away, then you run out of contractors that'll do, uh, winter plowing. Um, but you might find someone with a motor grader, then they can do some, summer, summer blading. But, uh, that's what it really comes down to, is there, are there enough contractors or other contractors out there for the townships to go to? Where you really end up kinda taking ones that don't have, have their services.
John, uh, Mr. Chair, do we need two separate motions, one to approve a contract and then a separate one for the, for the rates, or is this all? I, I wasn't clear about that.
It would. The, again, the agreements, uh, are just draft and they're not for approval. Um, the intent is, is that as long as we're good with, uh, kind of the wording. I do have in front of the attorney to make sure it's good with, under his eyes too, but, uh, the. The agreements are just right now in draft form, however, I'm gonna take them to a township, they'll approve them, then they'll come back and then they'll be on the boards, uh. Time for you to approve it. However, the rates, again, the rates are normally set, uh, annually. And so we do have rates out there right now for, um, blading and winter snow plowing. So this would be a change to the rates or how we charge. And so that's, that's what takes the motion is to approve the new rate.
And when, when, did, I didn't see where it's at, it would take effect, that the race would take effect at what point? The, the summer grading already early or, or not till next year plowing?
The intent was they, they would be, they would go into effect when this agreement goes into effect. Um, and so if a township, yes, does summer blading, they were going into effect with the summer blading.
Um, Mr. Uh, uh, Mr. Chair, a, a few questions is, is how much of this will? This, uh, affect, you know, the townships up in District Four? And are there townships that do county roads? Um. Do this type of service for, for the county? And, uh, I'm not too sure about the rates. I mean, we already approved the rates or the, the. The, the fees, you know, for the year, so to, to impose a, a separate set of fees mid-year, I, I, I'm not too sure if I would. Support something like that.
What is their contract? What's the contract now that you have, say, with, uh, Turtle River?
Nothing.
There's no written contract?
No written contract, there's nothing in writing.
Okay.
With any township, again, that's the intent of this.
Right.
Agreement is put it in writing. Uh, right now, the process is, is when the budget is approved, when the board sets all rates across the county, that's when we have those other. Uh. Rates in front of you, and so they go into effect normally at the beginning of a calendar year. And so they go into effect normally at the beginning of a calendar year.
But the hourly rate right now, Bruce, I, I, I seem to me it was like a hundred and sixty bucks an hour for, for plowing when I was on the town board, but that's been five years ago or more now.
That's, that was gonna be my guess, maybe Dan can look it up quick, but I believe it's like one sixty-five for winter plowing and maybe like one sixty, it's, it's different for summer blading.
It just seemed to me like it wouldn't take them an hour to plow a mile of road. Um, you know, I'm just concerned about this being a, a big increase for the township, like when I live in Fort Hope. And, you know, this seems like a pretty drastic increase, that's all. And would like to have seen some comparison of, of, okay, you know, Fort Hope Township, for instance, here's, here's what they paid, here's what we'd estimate that they would pay based on these new parameters. And, you know, if they go from whatever, paying ten thousand for the winter to paying forty thousand, you know, that's a big difference for the, the setting the levy and everything.
Yeah, and I guess I don't have each individual or township and, and part of it, again. This is the, I, I knew it was going to be the big part to the big question about what was the impact and.
Hundred and sixty.
I'm just, again, the, to, this is what it's costing us to maintain a, a mile of gravel road or a mile of paved road. And so for us to. I guess that's why I was wanting to cover our full costs, our, all of our costs. Again, it's not fair to me. I live in Turtle River Township, but the county's blading or snow plowing my road. To be getting a, a rate that's not covering all the costs is not fair because someone, another township is picking up those costs. If they're not getting that, or using the township to maintain their roads.
John has a question and I'll get to Tim.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Bruce, do you have any idea what the availability is of private contractors to pick up that work that, that the county will lose with that fee schedule? So I, I, I guess in my opinion, if there's plenty of private contractors out there that take the, the work from the county, good for them. I, I don't have a problem with that.
If, if they do the same quality of work, yeah.
But I was, I was thinking that same question and I probably Tim too, but if there isn't, then we're kind of really putting, you know, kind of people in a squeeze. So let's go to Tim's question.
Well, I, I, Mr. Chair, you know, Bruce was talking about fairness and, and, you know, I mean, I, I think I, I talk about fairness, you know, at least a few times a year when it comes to, you know, the folks that I represent up in District Four and, and how they uh, sometimes feel like they're not getting a fair shake at, at some of the things that the county provide. So I'm, I'm making a point about fairness.
Okay, is, I guess to kind of answer that, again, the, that's gonna be the question for that, those townships is, they're gonna go out there and say, hey, contractor, what can you, you know, what can you do it for? Right now, you know, they're doing that against our rates of the hundred and sixty-five, they're looking at contractors and what's their availability. And Bemidji Township, I keep using them as example, they have a contractor that takes care of their winter plowing, but they feel that their rates are going up or they're not getting the services they're provided, whatever it be, they're coming to us and saying, hey, can you plow our roads? And we're like, no, we can't, we don't have the, the ability to do it. You know, if someone dropped off, then we could add them.
Yeah, but at a hundred and sixty dollars versus a, a twelve hundred, that's quite a leap. And many townships would not come to the county if that were there.
Well, again, one thing, these are annual rates. So this isn't a per time, it's a per mile annual rate, so it's a thousand dollars for the year.
Oh, see, I didn't.
I didn't catch that at all. I thought you were gonna charge them twelve hundred dollars per mile every time they plowed.
I did too.
Yeah, I was like, holy crap.
Sorry, I didn't do a good job.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's a whole different ballgame then, Bruce.
I was, I was just deciding not to go to my hometown ship during their March meeting because I didn't want to be strung up.
Dick asked me that question back there and I answered it to him, but I, I didn't realize it.
Okay, that's a whole.
That makes a lot of difference. I was thinking, you know, it's a hundred and sixty bucks, it can't take them an hour to plow that versus a thousand or twelve hundred bucks every time. That's not, that's a lot more than double.
It's going back to our, our annual cost accounting system or, or annual report. And we can tell you it costs us, you know, a thousand miles for a gravel road. And I looked at five year average and so I got what an annual cost is for us to maintain a road. And so that's how these rates were, were set. And so.
Okay, so tell me, say it's a thousand dollars, what, what does that cover? For plowing?
Well, the thousand dollars, we got blading at a thousand dollars, that's summer blading. This, the snow plowing of gravel is the twelve hundred per mile, snow plowing a paved road is two thousand a mile. If they do both blading and snow plowing on gravel, it's two thousand a mile, so that's two hundred bucks.
Okay, less. So if they have twenty miles, then it would be times two or whatever it is.
Okay, correct.
So, Mr. Chair, then the county assumes a risk if we have a heavy snowfall winter?
Correct.
Okay, so now this year, this year we get off easy.
Yeah. I mean, we, in the last five years, and I don't remember which year it was, but we did have a big year, three years ago now or something like that. So that was in our, the five year average that I looked at, but.
But oftentimes in a, in a small township, they'll hire somebody that has a smaller machine that takes longer to cover the roads. And so whatever they're paying per hour, we're gonna be doing faster with our bigger graders and plows and that sort of thing too.
Well, the other thing for the townships that might switch off to try to use a private contractor, you know, they're probably gonna be the low person on the pecking order. Because, you know, that contractor, if they've been working with X, Y, and Z township for many years, they're gonna get first priority to get plowed, I would think.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, so then you, you go around, i- i- and you don't always start at the same spot with plowing, or how do you do that?
So far, snow, you're snow plowing?
Yep.
For our snow plowing, again, we start with our county roads, higher traffic and each operator, each route, they start with that. And then they work down to the lower trout, you know, lower ADT, lower, lower traffic routes on down to the, the township. And so we're doing ours and we're doing theirs. And again, each snow event is different. Sometimes we're just plowing paved roads, so we'll do our paved roads and we'll go do the, you know, township's paved routes. And Turtle River, there's four different operators that touch Turtle River's routes. Cause, you know, they got a few miles of paved roads and a bunch of gravel, and so we split them all up. So everybody's routes have kind of that similar main paved, extra, you know, paved, extra gravel. And so our routes are all kind of, I'm gonna say, have a little bit of each, so that they all end up being done at the same amount of time.
So we, I know at one time for one of the townships, you did backup for in case their person they hired broke down or whatever, are you still doing that or not?
Okay, oh, it's on, on or off, it's.
Good, good. Anyone else have questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so I, I might have asked earlier, how many townships does this affect and, and how many townships utilize, you know, the colony for, for this service? I, I, I just, I, I'm having a difficult time supporting something like this, but I mean, it, it, it's just me, you know, I'm only one, one vote, so. And, and I think Bruce was just asking that we develop something going forward, maybe beginning this, this summer. Um, but it hasn't received the approval or, or any type of clearance from, from the attorney or, or the administrator. So I think for me, without any type of clearance from them, I'm just a little hesitant. So I mean, you know, it's, it's totally up to you guys on, on how you want to move forward, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not in support of this yet tonight.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And one thing that I could see now that I've got the clarification of it being an annual deal for that, so if, if the township has thirty, thirty miles of roads that are gonna get plowed and graded, then I know that they've got a flat fee of sixty thousand dollars for that year. Um, that's, you know, could be a good thing to township to, so they, you know, don't have to worry about high, higher, low fluctuations and in plowing and so on. So it, it would actually, in, in a way, make it easier for them to, to levy for it because they know for sure how much they're gonna need to spend that year on the plowing and grading. So I could see that as, as actually possibly being a benefit.
Oh, I agree that, that, that could be and, and I see Tim's concern too.
Absolutely.
If it wasn't okayed by our attorney or by.
But we're not approving that part tonight. We're just approving the rate. He's, the rest is in our draft and has to be approved by the townships and stuff for us to approve at a later date. We're just talking about the rate tonight.
Okay.
Correct, Bruce?
Yeah, correct, I mean.
The concept, you know, the contract.
Yep.
We don't have contracts for this, and so this brought my attention. I said, yeah, I'm glad to help you. He's already shared the document with me. I'll have my feedback with him by the end of the week. And so if you guys pre-approve the concept of it, do not come back, you know, you guys will be drafting of, of, you know, the release or anything like that, that's, you know, Bruce and I, you want to talk about, which we can do as well. But that, you can stop on it, but we'll, we'll have final draft.
Mr. Chair, as a recovering public works director from a former life. Uh, I, I can tell you, I share the county attorney's position on this as well. Bruce and I have talked about this a number of months ago and I encouraged his movement in this direction so that the townships and the county could write down exactly what the expectations were and can resolve disputes and issues and concerns and, and level what the expectations are within regard to services. So I too was surprised, we did not have a contract for this type of service. I think it is a best practice. Um, I think the rates are certainly yours to set. And so if you'd like more time to think about that or you need more analysis done on that, that's okay. I would just add, although Commissioner Gosbig did talk about the benefit to the township, which is a designated fee that's set right at the beginning that they can budget off of, which is very advisable. Um, the county could take it into shorts on a occasional period here and there. And in some contracts, there are provisions for whereby if it goes above a certain amount, there's a protection to the, to the organization providing the service. We don't have that in this contract. We may want to entertain it either now or at some point in the future after we see how it works. Um, might be better to do it in the future, but that is an area that probably the only area that I'm mostly concerned about is, okay, if we get a sort of bad year and we take a little bit of a loss, that's maybe not a big deal. Go on a year by five or ten year basis, but if it, if it happens every two or three years, that could be more significant for us. At which point we may want to come back to you and talk about having an exception to a, to an outlier year or something like that. But other than that, I think this is a, a great practice and I, I think it would be beneficial to the county and the townships to move in that direction.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just to reiterate that, part of the reason why we put it on the agenda for tonight to, to hopefully get some resolution to it is because of the township annual meetings happening um, on like the fourteenth of March. So if we wait until the seventh of March, that doesn't give Bruce much time to get to the townships, to get that information out there for them to be able to set their levies. So that's why, I think we should get it done tonight.
Okay, is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the concept of a road, uh, road maintenance agreement with the townships and approve the proposed rates as set forth.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, good, approved three to one. All right, thank you, sir.
Just to close, we do about forty townships.
Okay, thank you. And then you, you will get that information to the townships once, uh, before the meeting, so that they've had time to think.
Yeah, I'll.
Okay.
We get it kind of reviewed, I'll get it in the mail out to them.
Okay. Uh, Bruce, I would send it to, um, I think it's Beto, is that how they say that? Beto also, so that she can facilitate, she might be able to facilitate that anyway.
Yeah, I was gonna offer up because I would expect that there'd be questions, so I was gonna offer up to go there and schedule it.
Okay.
Like for my township, actually, the, the week before, the Wednesday before the annual meeting would be their town meeting, that's when they would really like to have it by. So they can prepare for the proposed levy for the town meeting, or for the annual meeting. So, you know, the sooner the better for getting this out.
Yeah. All right, and next item is dealing with.
What do you have? Resource management.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we are passing out a amendment to one of the documents in your packet. Uh, there is a small Scrivener's error that we'd like to correct. And we see, I see we have the Natural Resources Director here to talk you through that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm here in a public meeting on camera to admit I made a mistake. I, I think he handed out to you, this is one of those parcels that we're trying to sell to resolve an encroachment. And so time of the essence, that's why I didn't wait for two weeks, I gotta get all this information down to the legislature so they can approve the private sale of this gentleman. This was that one that was just a fraction of an acre, barely anything on it. But my mistake was I forgot to put in the forty of it, and I believe it's the northwest or southeast that has been changed now. So if you could please accept my apology for making a mistake and pass that or agree that we're good to go on that and, and send it through the process, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, and discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved four zero.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You too, thank you. Okay, next item is Tom's report. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a small report for, for you all this evening. As you know, we met with U S Representative Pete Staber last week. Uh, we toured him through the jail facility and talked about our challenges and the opportunities we felt were, uh, potentially available to us in regard to federal government's assistance. Uh, he took great interest in the project. Um, you may saw that we had a press release on that as well. Um, so this is really mostly as an update for the public as opposed to, to you all, so I think you're pretty much aware of that. But we are, we are still in communication with his office and will be, uh, working to submit, uh, funding requests through the federal government, uh, through his office here shortly. Um, just wanted to let you know that we did, based on your direction, uh, we were able to, uh, pull together a meeting with the AWCL school representatives. Uh, that will be happening this Thursday afternoon, so after that happens, I'll be able to get you more information, uh, in regard to what their, uh, what their response is. Uh, just quickly on the legislative front, uh, all four of our legislative bills have been drafted. Uh, we are ready to submit them after we coordinate the authorships of these, uh, which is in, being done right now. We, so we expect to have that wrapped up hopefully by the end of this week so that we can submit them, uh, next week, uh, to the appropriate committees. The, uh, there was a preliminary Senate tax conference meeting held last week. And, uh, we had our lobbyists attend that on our behalf. And, uh, the feedback that we received from, uh, I'm told that we received from the, uh, and it wasn't the full committee, it was just two or three members of the committee who are shepherding these things through and organizing them. They felt that, that we had a very good and strong package and that we had demonstrated, uh, significant regional, uh, support and significance. And of course, that is important under the statute, so we feel pretty good about that. The House Tax Committee still has not yet determined if the lost bills are gonna be heard in their property tax division or in the full tax committee, or if at all. Uh, the House Tax Chair, Representative Gomez, has publicly stated her opposition to any lost, um, requests this year. So that, uh, that could be a challenge for us if that's, uh, that ends up happening. Lastly, on this front, just want to let you know that, uh, the Teamsters and Forty Niners representatives have, uh, reached out to us. We've put them in touch with our legislative lobbyists and they're supporters of our project and could also help us down at. We've put them in touch with our legislative lobbyists and they're supporters of our project and could also help us, uh, down at the State House in regards to particularly working conditions and the jail layout and the design and the assaults and, and the things that are important to the staff and the, and the labor side of the, of the facility. Uh, lastly, you may have saw, I did it, uh, a little bit earlier today, I've made a request to the governor and lieutenant governor, uh, to discuss the county's jails, demographics, current challenges, future plans, those sorts of things. Um, I have not received back any word yet. I'm, I'm certain it'll take a few days before they can process that request. Um, but essentially, uh, wanted to let you know that that was out in front of them. Uh, that's all I have, no really important dates or anything to share at this point in time, but I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Tom.
You bet.
Right, uh, how about legislative lobbying issues?
Um, for, no, uh, I just got, uh, well, as, as you know, AMC has, has been, uh, switched over to, um, virtual, so I'll be doing the, the virtual conference the next couple of days. I was really looking forward to going down there and, and, uh, lobbying our, our legislature, legislators, uh, on, on the County's behalf. So unfortunately, uh, Mother Nature had, uh, different plans. Um, so, uh, for Commissioners' report, I want to remind, uh, remind you folks that the Red Lake State Aband is, um, March tenth, um, at the Oshkamon Tada building in Redby. Um, if, if you are interested, I believe there may have some, been something sent out, so, uh, just a reminder. That, that's my report for tonight.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, probably the only thing is that we were allowed about twenty minutes at Greater Bemidji uh, monthly meeting. Uh, Tom did come also. And we were able to give an update on the jail project and I think it was well-received. Uh, I think we're starting to win some minds with regard to the possibility of a local option sales tax, if it should come to that, if the state allows us to do that. But anyway, I think that was, it was a great opportunity to give, uh, those folks an update, so it was it.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, had a, a great opportunity, um, at my airport authority meeting to take a tour of the Air Corps aviation facilities. They have three facilities in, in town, one in the industrial park, one in the old Big North facility on, uh, Adams Avenue and then right at the airport and, and, uh, that was such an amazing, you know, the, the number of people that they employ and, and, uh, the work that they do, they can manufacture basically anything to recreate, um, an entire airplane. I mean, literally anything, they, they can manufacture it here, they've got a fifteen-hundred-ton press in the industrial park. I mean, it's just astounding, all the info, all the, um, the tech, you know, technology and, and staff that they have right here in Bemidji. So that was really, really enjoyable to take a tour of their facilities and, uh, um, yeah, um, HRDC, um, I'm helping them with some technology stuff at our meeting on Thursday and gonna meet, uh, actually tomorrow, I believe, to, um, get them on the right road with the new servers and things like that. And I had a fair board meeting last night and there's a lot of interest about, you know, what, what's going on with the jail, where's it gonna be, all these kinds of things. And of course, you couldn't give them a, a lot of answers, cause some of those aren't decided yet, but it was, was certainly, uh, um, they've been very, very much, uh, wanting to know as a general public probably as to what's going on and where we're at. So that's it, thank you.
Mr. Chair, um, uh, Commissioner Gosbig, so, uh, who, who would a person, uh, contact in regards to like the aviation and, and things like airport? Uh, um, you know, I know over, I think over the last week, there's been some concerns about, uh, airplanes flying over, you know, or over and around Red Lake. Um, and, and I think it's my understanding that Red Lake is a no-fly zone, so I mean, for, for private airplanes or aircrafts to be flying, I'm not too sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe those planes were private planes that were flying over there. I've seen some information about that myself and, and the, the tail numbers and information on those, I don't believe they were private planes. Um, and, uh, so, yeah, it's kind of, you, you know, interesting, concerning, you come up with a lot of words, probably, but, but that wouldn't be anything that the airport authority would have any control over.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.